audio mic check. Commissioner Howell, mic check. Commissioner Lopez, mic check. Commissioner Beatty, mic check. Commissioner Dennis, mic check. Commissioner Meister, mic check. Justin Wagner, mic check.
Thank you.
County Clerk, mic check. Tom Stoles, mic check. One minute. Thirty seconds.
I'm going to print a document in a minute. You can go get it off the printer. I'm going to print a document. Do you get it off the printer when I'm ready?
Ten, nine, eight, seven.
Why is he doing that? Are you hearing that?
Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Border County Commission Meetings. Want to extend a specific welcome to those joining us online via Facebook and YouTube, those joining us on our television partner, KPTS, and those that are here in person. Good to see your smiling faces. We're glad that you're joining us this morning. It's a busy day. If you look at the agenda when you walked in, you could have picked up an agenda packet. We always encourage you to do so, so you can follow along all that we're working on and all the discussions that we're having here on the agenda today. If you have questions about any of the supporting documents, all the supporting documents that commissioners have as we make decisions, you can find those at sedgwickcounty.org. We encourage you to go click those links, look at the supporting docs. Makes for really good reading. Also want to make note that Commissioner Howell is joining us via Zoom today. He's online and he's on mute now. He is recovering from a procedure. So he'll be joining us today for all the items and is on Zoom. So got a lot of work. Let's get started. I'll officially call this meeting to order for November 13th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Pamela Hughes-Mason. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning. Let us pray. Sometimes, oh God, in the midst of silence, we receive clarity. So on this morning, as the county commissioners gather and all of the staff and everyone that makes sure that things move forward, we ask now, dear God, for thy presence and for thy covering. We ask you, God, to look on Sedgwick County. Hold us accountable and responsible, oh God. Help us, oh God, to be what you would have us to be as we grow, as we expand, as we debate, as we celebrate, oh God. There is nothing that is impossible with you in the forefront. So bless every family, every person, every child within Sedgwick County, God. Make all the working pieces fit together as never before. We thank you for the celebrations and those we acknowledge. But now, dear God, we just need you in our presence, in our lives, in our city, in our county, in our families, and in our atmosphere. So now, dear God, we yield this day, and we acknowledge that all things work together for the good for those who love God. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Pam, thank you very much. Appreciate you as always and all that you do for our community. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Chairman Beatty.
President. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Yes, she is. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. November is National Veterans and Military Families Month. We want to recognize our active-duty military and veteran families that answer our nation's call to duty, and we recognize their service and sacrifice. Commissioner Meitzner graciously shared a story of his Uncle Bob Curry, who paid the ultimate sacrifice fighting for our freedom in World War II. We have a short video about it.
As the nation marks this Veterans Day with flags and song, Commissioner Pete Meitzner has a reminder every day on his office wall.
There's Bob in the plane on the aircraft carrier Lexington. There he is in the war room. It's in this book, The Blue Ghost. That was the name of the Lexington, was the nickname.
His Uncle Bob was killed in World War II.
He was a pilot and had a gunner. Ironically, Bob took off. He died. He was just turned 24. But he had just got married, and his wife was pregnant. He was shot down in the Palua Islands. His gunner actually came up and survived.
Bob Curry was one of five brothers to Pete's mom, Kitty. The men all served in the war, but in different military branches. Only Bob did not come home to his family.
She was, I was just 16, but I looked in the room, and they were sobbing together. Mom said it was the first time that she saw her mom break down. Joe, the dad, grew up in Abilene, and he was neighbors with Eisenhower family. One of Eisenhower's sisters wrote a message to Ike saying, hey, Joe lost one of his sons. Eisenhower sent this letter, and here's the envelope we have. This note is dated June 25th of 1944, which is 19 days after D-Day. So he's running the European World War II, the advance, Normandy, but took a moment to write a note, a personal note about that loss. And to me, it's always, I do a lot of personal note writing instead, and that was always been an inspiration. Bless them all. I think about it often, and we go over to Calvary Cemetery is where Grandma and Grandpa are buried, and Mom and Dad, and all these uncles are buried over there, too. So we make a round, and we go there, and there's a memorial for Uncle Bob right there. Fantastic heroes, all of them. I just can't imagine. Everybody talks about it. These guys were true heroes, no question.
Thank you again, sir, for sharing your story. For today's county good news, the Regional Forensic Science Center earned a perfect score during their recent audit. We're going to show a short video about it to explain their accomplishments, and Dr. Stedman is in the audience if you guys have any questions.
Imagine taking a test with hundreds of questions.
There's 220 different standards that ANAB assesses us on.
Then getting a perfect score. That's what the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center earned during an annual audit by ANAB, the ANSI National Accreditation Board.
I know that it's impressive because I myself have gone to other laboratories, and I've been an assessor, and I know that that's very rare.
Yet her team has received a flawless review not once, but five years in a row, evaluated on everything from their equipment and training to policies and procedures.
We spend a lot of time in the lab, making sure everything is traceable, making sure things are properly labeled.
We have to show compliance with all of these standards every year to keep our accreditation.
That accreditation is crucial because it opens the door to grant funding, like the overdose data to action program that began in December 2023. The forensic science center tests drugs found at the scene of overdose deaths to help the Sedgwick County Health Department develop drug prevention and treatment measures.
So far, we have collected samples from about 78 scenes, and we've tested almost 400 items.
The DNA lab at the forensic science center must earn an additional accreditation each year from the FBI, clearance to use its national DNA database.
It's very important that we have access to it because we solve, on average, about 75 to 100 cases a year with the DNA database. We play a role in many cases, so anywhere from a homicide to a sexual assault to aggravated robberies and kidnappings to even lower-level property crimes.
With Sedgwick County earning the highest reviews on both audits, lab reports used in court carry a lot of weight.
The quality system is an action of every single person here. It's their work ethic. It's their continuing education. It's the training programs that are provided here, and I'm proud of each and every one of them.
Again, congratulations to the Regional Forensic Science Center. Dr. Stedman is here if you guys have any questions.
Yeah, Dr. Stedman, why don't you come down? We want to congratulate you in person, and your team is here. Some members of your team are here today. We appreciate you. And can you tell us, is this an annual audit that takes place, or what is the timeframe of it?
Yeah, we're assessed annually, either internally or externally. It's kind of like going to the dentist. Nobody really likes it, but it's good for you. And by the same token, it's not something you tidy up the lab for the week before. Brush your teeth every day so that when you go to the dentist, you don't get an awful bad report, and that's how this works. We check everything from the temperature of our refrigerators to the expiration dates on our Band-Aids and our first aid kits. And so it's a lot of work every day by everybody there. And I do want to introduce my team of people who were involved in this particular surveillance audit. Sarah Gearing is the DNA lab manager and technical leader, and the DNA lab undergoes an additional assessment under the FBI quality assurance standards. And Rachel Taylor is here from the Drug Identification Unit. And Robert Hanson is our quality assurance manager, and he was one of the first people I hired when I became a supervisor, and he flew here from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I think it was his first time on an airplane. And he brought his girlfriend, and we hired him, and I thought that was a pretty big flight risk. But he's been here, I convinced him to buy a house in Mulvane, and he married that girl, and he's been here for more than two decades. And he's really the person who organized everything and keeps us all in line. And so I want to give him special recognition today.
Very good. Dr. Stedman, thank you, and congratulations to the team. We appreciate the great work that you do at the Forensic Science Center.
And that's all I have for today. I don't have any more movies to share.
Okay, wonderful. Any questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Dennis?
Well, two things. I'll start off with Forensic Science Center. That is one of the premier departments that we have to help our law enforcement. And we want to thank them very much for everything that they do. Second thing I want to talk about is back to Veterans Day. I want to thank everyone that came out for the parade on Veterans Day. We had a great parade, ended up at Expiration Place. I want to thank everyone in Expiration Place. We had a register of deeds over there that was providing ID cards for military if they had their DD 214 so that they could file it. Veterans had free entry into, and their families into Expiration Place that day, as well as the zoo was providing free entry into the zoo for Veterans Day. I want to thank everyone that paid the ultimate sacrifice. Commissioner Meitzner said it very well on his uncle, but we have thousands of people that have paid the ultimate price just out of Wichita. So I just want to mention one individual from the city of Wichita that I don't know, but I was at his gravesite on Monday. I belong to American Legion Post Four, and it's named Thomas Hopkins, American Legion. And to tell you why that it was named after him is that he was the first Wichitan killed in World War I. He enlisted, and then they commissioned him as an officer, so he was lieutenant. He was in France, and about four o'clock in the morning, the Americans started a bombardment of the German positions, and shortly thereafter, why the Germans started bombarding back. But the Americans tried to tack across no man's land to get across the lines into the German defenses. They did capture a few Germans, and we lost a couple Americans at that time. But on the way back across the lines, one of the soldiers got caught up in the barbed wire, and Thomas Hopkins went back to get him. And he did pull him out of the barbed wire, and both of them started running for the American lines, and both were machine gun. Both were wounded and died the next day. So this is 1918, the first Wichitan that died in World War I. He was buried in France initially, and then in 1921, they brought his body back to the United States so he could be buried with his parents. They buried him on Armistice Day of 1921, which is now Veterans Day. So that's why we went out to recognize Thomas Hopkins on Veterans Day this year for his sacrifice. But he's just one of many that are buried in our cemeteries or across the city of Wichita, Sedgwick County. And each one of those gave their lives for you and I. So thank you all very much for letting me talk about that. Appreciate it.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dennis, I appreciate you being out there for that, sharing that story. Just quickly, I want to thank the communications department. They sent out a message a few weeks ago, said, hey, anybody got a war story or a veteran's story? And I just said, well, I might have one, but I don't know if it's a big deal or not. But they jumped on it and did a great job. The communications department does a wonderful video. They just do a really nice job. And I just want to sincerely thank them, and I've already shared that with 25 cousins of that generation, and they just love it all around the country. So some little irony in World War I that you're talking about, and sorry, this is a little Veterans Recognition Day on Wednesday here, but my grandfather, Max Meitzner, was, he was born in 1899, and in 1914, so he's at the age of 15, he was in Germany, and so he was told to go fight in the same war that you just talked about. So my grandfather Meitzner fought against my other grandfather, Joe, in the, in World War I, and then afterwards, he came over. So my dad and mom married, and there were two, the two dads fought against each other in World War I. But it's just a reminder that we're a great world when, and a great country when we can accept all veterans and honor them, no matter what they did. So if it's all right with you, Chairman, is anybody here, just like anybody that's in the military, veteran, just stand up so we could recognize you, if there are any. And I know Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Howell.
Thank you for that. Thank you to those that have served. Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Howell, and this commission in particular. But Pete, that was a remarkable video. So thank you for sharing. Nicole, great job today. We appreciate you greatly. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, we had, several people have signed up for public agenda, but it looks like all have signed up, well, most have signed up, forgive me, most have signed up to talk about the rezoning discussion that we have later. So we'll hold off on that and open up public comment for the rezoning hearing and wait there. There is one individual that has signed up to speak for public comment, Mr. Andrew Crane. There he comes. So as Andrew likely knows, just name an address, our county clerk, our friendly county clerk. We'll give you five minutes. Good morning, sir.
Guiding pause ICT, Andrew Crane, 250 West Douglas Avenue, Wichita, Kansas. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of update. The NFE of Kansas had their state convention in Lawrence, Kansas, and it was a great state convention, and a lot of folks came out for that. And one of the initiatives that the NFE of Kansas is doing with the, helping out the blind and disabled community here in Sedgwick County and in Wichita, is doing a lot more, getting awareness out there in the, in the community, and educating the business community. So that was a big thing in our state convention, and that, and we have some legislative stuffs that we're going to be doing in DC. So just wanted to let you guys know that. We'll be attending Washington, DC, end of January, first of February. We'll be attending Washington, DC, end of January, first of February. So, yeah.
Very good, okay. Any questions or comments for Andrew? Andrew, thank you so much for the continued updates. We appreciate the emails, and you keep us in the loop what's going on. Much success, sir. Okay, that's all for Public Agenda. We'll wait for the rezoning hearing for the remainder that have signed up. So I'll make a motion to receive and file public comment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of October 16th, 2024.
Okay, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 16th, 2024. All Commissioners were present with the exception of Commissioner Dennis. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Abstain.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item B, Regular Meeting Minutes of October 23rd, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all had a chance to review the meeting minutes for October 23rd, 2024. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item C, Proclamation Declaring National Apprenticeship Week.
Okay, a wonderful proclamation. I have asked Commissioner Meitzner to read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a National Apprenticeship Week. So whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its 10th anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating opportunities by allowing apprentices to earn while they learn, and preparing a pathway to good, quality jobs and well-paying careers in Sedgwick County and across the nation. And whereas registered apprenticeship programs enable employers to develop and train their future workforce while offering career seekers affordable paths to secure high-paying jobs. And whereas Sedgwick County recognizes the role of registered apprenticeship in expanding opportunities in our workforce that are inclusive of individuals who have historically been underserved, marginalized, and adversely affected by persistent poverty and inequality, thus providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with disabilities, to become apprentices and contribute to America's industry. And whereas Sedgwick County recognizes that registered apprenticeship, a proven and industry-driven training model, is a key strategy to improving job quality and creating access to good-paying, family-sustaining jobs for all, starting with youth and youth adults, while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding our country's infrastructure, addressing critical supply chain demands, supporting a clean energy workforce, and modernizing our cybersecurity response, while responding to core economy issues. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 17th through the 23rd of 2024 as National Apprenticeship Week. NAW is a nationwide celebration that brings together employers, industry associations, labor organizations, community-based organizations, workforce partners, education providers, and government leaders to demonstrate their support for registered apprenticeship. Chairman Beatty, if it's okay, thank you for letting me read this, and I'll make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to recognize, Amanda, you're in the audience. If any of you don't know, this lady does a great job in placing our workforce. She works tirelessly. She's got a lot of data. Thank you for all you do, Amanda.
Yes. Good morning, Amanda. Would you like to share a few thoughts?
Well, good morning. We just, the Workforce Alliance would like to thank Sedgwick County for the partnership in recognizing National Apprenticeship Week. We have several of our participating partner sponsors in the audience today, as well as my colleague, Melody Head, who is the Registered Apprenticeship Coordinator for this region of the state. I'd like to give you a couple of quick facts. We have 792 active apprentices in Sedgwick County with 26 sponsors or intermediaries. And on average, those individuals earn $80,000 a year once they complete their training program, which is quite a great wage for our area. And the employers who participate have a 94% retention of those employees. So it's a wonderful opportunity for companies to grow their workforce and gain a very skilled and valuable loyal employee.
Yeah, remarkable. Yeah, very good. Well, we appreciate all the work you do. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Amanda?
Thank you, Amanda, for that data as well.
It's very helpful, yeah. We'd like to get a picture with you guys to celebrate, if that's okay. We can do that right out here on the steps. So if you can give us about a five-minute break, we're going to go celebrate this proclamation and all the great work being done by Workforce Alliance. Happens to me all the time. We're back. People want to mute my mic all the time, don't they? It would hurt. Okay, let's do it officially now. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item D, Consideration of a Grant Application in the Amount of $4,999,924 for the U.S. Department of the Interior National Park Service for Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Program.
Okay, good morning, Carrie.
Morning. Morning, Commissioner. I am Carrie Malin, Grant Administrator for Sedgwick County. I am here to present the application for the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Program, or the ORLP, in collaboration with the Sedgwick County Zoo. This request is for $4,999,924 in grant funds with a direct one-to-one matching funds. Sedgwick County's portion of this match will consist of 2.5 million and is from investment income that exceeded estimates within the county general fund. The remaining matching funds will be sourced from the Zoological Society's capital campaign. These funds will be utilized to expand the current elephant habitat to allow room for upcoming elephant births. The new elephant Boma will provide an additional 19,500 square foot for the elephants. The Sedgwick County Zoo will welcome the first elephant to be born in the state of Kansas in early 2025, with former elephant calves expected by the end of 2025. The additional space this project will provide will give this growing herd more bonding space and give animal management staff additional options to keep the herd comfortable as it grows. This application submission deadline was originally set for November 15th, 2024, but we discovered today that the website is now indicating that it has been extended to February 2nd, 2024. We have to follow up and confirm if that is actually extended. I will stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Commissioner, do we have any questions? We've been briefed on this, and we have several people from the zoo and Zoological Society that are here today. We're grateful for all the wonderful work that you guys do. And we've been talking elephants for a few months here in Sedgwick County, and really excited about all the developments that are happening at the zoo. So we've been briefed on these discussions, but let's continue conversation. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First, full disclosure, I am a member of the zoo board, so I'm speaking not on their behalf because I'm just a member, but I want to tell you what a great opportunity this is. We have five new baby elephants coming to the Sedgwick County Zoo next year. What is that going to do to the Sedgwick County Zoo? Right now, it's the number one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas. Right now, over $60 million worth of economic impact per year that that zoo has on our economy here. It's going to bring in even more visitors because who doesn't want to see five baby As they come in, this is a grant. This is about a half a million dollar grant. Yeah, half a million dollar grant. Total cost to build this new Boma, and I don't know what Boma means, but it's something the zoo understands. It's an elephant barn. It has to grow. And what does this mean to not only Sedgwick County, but to the United States as a whole? First of all, I think that the elephants that we received are going to be the last elephants that ever arrive in the United States. The elephants got in the United States originally because circuses brought them in, but they weren't looking at it as a way to protect the herd and to allow the growth in the herd. They were looking at it as an entertainment venue, and if an elephant died or it happened, anything happened to it, it aged out, they just imported more. Well, we can't do that anymore. We're to the point where that if we want our future generations to see these magnificent animals in the United States, we're going to have to have a breeding program. Well, there's 100 and some zoos across the United States, but out of those, only a handful have the ability to be able to grow our herd so that we can spread them out to other zoos across the United States so that everyone across our country can observe these magnificent animals. So this is an opportunity for us to be on the forefront of keeping elephants in the United States. It's a half a million dollar grant. In other words, federal and state, this is kind of convoluted how it all goes, but it ends up, if we can get this grant, it'll pay for half of what we're looking for. And the Zoological Society is working, trying to find the money, and I'm sure they will because who doesn't want to support five baby elephants? So the future is bright for us here. In addition, the economic impact, as I said, about $60 million a year or greater. The total cost of this is about $10 million, but hopefully we can get a grant for half of that. So we look, whenever we invest, and later on, this is just an application for a grant. But in the future, we'll be looking at how that, if we get it, or even if we don't, how that we're going to fund the rest of this. That's a future decision. It's not what we're doing today. Today, we're going to vote to approve the request for a grant. But if we look at the dollars, every time that we look at economic development, we look at at least a one-to-one return on our investment. Well, even without this grant, it's a six-to-one return on our investment. I don't know of any other thing that I've sat on this bench for that has a six-to-one return on investment. So this is a fantastic opportunity, and if half of it's paid for, well, it's about a 12-to-one return on our investment. So I strongly support the application for this grant. Hopefully, it comes through because it'll allow us to build this, and we have to have this done by the end of next year. And in the meantime, we're going to be doing some baby development around that zoo to make sure that we baby-proof it so that these little bitty elephants can't escape into the wild. But we have to build an additional barn there in order to be able to ensure that the future of how that we're going to breed these elephants and how that we're going to be able to increase the size of the herd and how that we're going to be able to distribute these across the United States. That's all run by the American Zoological Society, AZA, whatever the heck that stands for, sorry. But this is the first step. So at the appropriate time, I'd like to make a motion to recommend submission of this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. A few questions. And Commissioner Howell, I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and then if you have anything to say or a question to ask, just take yourself off mute and get our attention. But Carrie, the grant is from the Department of Interior. The grant is for $4.9 million. There is a match required from local government, correct? So our match, what we would be matching is 2.5 million dollars. Is that, am I accurate there?
So it's a one-to-one match with funds, so whatever we get from the feds, we have to match one-to-one.
One-to-one. So go ahead, Tom, if you...
Well, and the other part to discuss on this is what the county's culpability on this is, and I know we'll talk about that, but we would, and Carrie has mentioned this, we will match whatever the society will match in reference to this grant. So if we get all $10 million for all of the grant, the county's role in that would be 2.5 million, and the society would take 2.5 million.
Important clarity. Good, very good. Now, this is just, the item today for the public, this is just approval to submit the grant application. There's going to be further conversations with the county, what Tom just got into. And at that point in time, I'm going to ask some questions about where these dollars are going to come from, from the county, and we can wait for a later date on that conversation. Les Lindsay, we want to talk about that now, and it seems as she might. Two things can be true at once. Everything Commissioner Dennis just said is absolutely correct about the six-to-one return on investment. The zoo and what the zoo represents to this community is incredibly important, and we have an investment into the zoo that needs to be protected, and we have to be good stewards over it. At the same time, we are in a community in a position where we are very property tax hesitant right now because of the cost of government increasing. So with that being said, Lindsay?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Lindsay Pover, so you're CFO. I appreciate the opportunity to invite myself to your podium. So actually, what we have on your agenda later today as a consent agenda item is a $2.5 million award to the zoo for this funding. So we actually are taking action today to spend that $2.5 million and award it to the Zoological Society as our contribution to this project regardless of whether the grant is received or not. So the culpability for the Zoological Society is anywhere from the $2.5 million, assuming we get the grant, up to 7.5 million, assuming we don't get the grant, whether that's through their fundraising efforts or anything. But that is what the county's responsibility is intended to be through this grant application process. Of that, it is because of your property tax conversation, it's really important to note that we are intending to use investment income. As you all know, as you have seen, and you'll hear more about it from Hope Hernandez during your quarterly report later today, our investment income has exceeded even our highest expectations for this year. And so that is one-time... And so, that is one-time money. We know it's not going to recur. This is a one-time project, and so that would be the source of it. That's also why we find it important to do it now while we have that unexpected revenue stream.
Okay. I was going to pull it off consent to talk about it, but I appreciate you running up to the podium.
Fair enough.
Yeah, very good. So, this is coming from investment income. This is not property tax dollars that we are investing.
Correct.
Second question I have is for Justin. There was a ballot initiative in 1966. A lot of people ask questions publicly about our relationship with the Sedgwick County Zoo and the funding relationship and what that looks like. We have 112 employees at the Sedgwick County Zoo. We have over 75 assets at the Sedgwick County Zoo. We have over 3,000 animals at the Sedgwick County Zoo. But what prompted all of this was a ballot initiative from the voter in 1966. Can you give me a little background as to what this is and what our responsibility is by the voter?
Certainly, Chairman. Justin Waidner, County Counselor. In 1966, there was a vote. The question at that point was whether the voters were asked if the county should go out to bond fund the acquisition and development of the property that contains the Sedgwick County Zoo and Sedgwick County Park properties. The vote was in favor of that. It's also worth noting that in the context around that, the resolution and also the publication for that vote, it noted that the county was intending to utilize county funds through ad valorem taxes could be used for all the property development and maintenance of the zoo property. So, that is certainly part of what was in that vote. I think it's also worth noting that the county has a long-term public-private partnership with the Sedgwick County Zoological Society where the Zoological Society is generally responsible for the ongoing maintenance or upkeep or improvements of buildings and structures at the Sedgwick County Zoo, but it's also not unprecedented for Sedgwick County to contribute funds to those for major projects such as this.
Okay, that's helpful. Very helpful. Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this has been, I just want to say thank you, Carrie, for your help in educating me on the grant. I want to thank Commissioner Dennis for not only his participation but his explanation and his background that was helpful for me, and also had a conversation with Commissioner Howell, who I think he's going to speak in a minute. And all of that information was very helpful because it seemed like things came at us really fast. If any of you've had a fast pregnancy and had to react, it's kind of felt like that. I had to catch up on a lot of stuff. So, it was very helpful to get me comfortable. This is a big deal, very important, and it's a big obligation for the county, for our commissioners and the taxpayers to support this or not. But I just want to thank you, Carrie, and Sam Lindsay for financing everybody's background to help me out. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your chance to speak. I wanted to explain, I guess before I get started, that I had surgery yesterday, and so I am not there today physically because I'm unable to get out today. I'm on a bedrest order. But also because of that, I also have some pain medications, and so I'm going to, I want to, number one, express my support for this, and if I'm not a swing vote today, I will feel comfortable voting yes for this. I just don't want to have anybody look at my vote today as saying that it was somehow needs to be challenged, and so I'll state that upfront. But second of all, I do appreciate the additional information that's been provided through the briefings last Tuesday, as well as, I guess, I was actually, I think it was last Tuesday, as well as the information from legal regarding the 1966 vote. And if you read that very carefully, Sedgwick County has a mandate, has a responsibility to do what the voters told us to do, and that includes purchasing this land and getting animals, creating exhibits and buildings, and essentially operating the zoo on the voters' will. So, we have an obligation. Now, where the revenue comes from is not really defined in that question necessarily. So, we have some options to find revenue, but we do have an obligation to have a zoo and take care of the animals, and of course, to pay people to do animal care and all the things that come with having a zoo. And I do think that this exhibit was planned back early in 2014, and we're on a planned track here to have an elephant breeding exhibit. So, this is kind of the conclusion of where this process started. It's not, it would not be reasonable to change horses at this point. I think we have exactly what the voters have asked us to do, and so I do think it's a great zoo, and I think it's exciting to see baby elephants. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I think that really the logistical money management of this is what we're talking about today because, I'll just point out real quickly that this grant, the O L R P grant from the Department of Interior has been a grant since 2014. I believe last year, they handed out a little more than $240 million to 23 states. Our application, I guess, if I understand correctly, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our application goes through the state of Kansas, and this year, I believe they've already appropriated more than $250 million this year for different projects across the country. And that money will be awarded to those contracts. So, it'll be more contracts, I'm sorry, there'll be more applications than there is money. And so, there is no chance that the government will not award those dollars out. Of course, I have some concern about the level of debt that our country's in right now, whether this is an appropriate use of government spending, but that's another question for another day. We do know that they are going to hand out this appropriation to different states as they apply for those dollars. And so, I think it's appropriate that we work with the zoo and we help them make this application successful. So, therefore, I think it is very reasonable, especially this is what I call one-time spending. This is one-time revenue. When you use investment income, we can kind of guesstimate what we'll get, but the revenue was actually exceeding our expectations. So, there is money available more than what we had planned, and so I think that to use those dollars for one-time spending actually is the most appropriate use of those dollars. And so, for all those reasons, I think it's very good that they are asking us for help, and I think it's really good that we do support the zoo, and I'd be glad to vote yes if there's a motion to do so. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, excuse me. One correction. I probably will need to vote yes only if I perceive there's four other votes, but otherwise, I might need to abstain. Thank you so much.
Okay, understood. Okay, Carrie, thank you for the detail and all the work you do on this grant and all the grants that we process through Sedgwick County Government. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank all the zoo board members and zoo staff that are in the audience today. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your support. I wanted to clarify a couple of things. The total of this, I think I misstated earlier, we're looking at a half a million dollar, we're looking at a $5 million grant. I'll get the numbers right yet. The total cost of this building is about $10 million, so I wanted to clarify that. I also want to expand a little bit on the return on investment. That return on investment that I talked about is in the first year we get that. Most of the time, when we're looking at a return on investment, it's over the life cycle, so it's compounded each year. So, I just wanted to show you that this is a huge return on investment. So, with that, we got a long motion. Do I need to read the entire motion, Mr.?
I would, Commissioner Dennis, I would suggest either reading the entire motion or clearly indicating that you're incorporating the recommended action from the agenda item.
I'll read the whole thing.
Okay.
I move that we approve the submission of the grant application and authorize the following actions. Acceptance of the grant, if awarded. Authorize the chairman or designee, the revenue manager, to sign all necessary documents, including a grant-award agreement containing substantially the same terms and conditions as the applicant, application. Authorize establishment of budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term, and allow for the remaining balance at the end of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year.
Okay, and I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
I'm going to pass for just a moment and see what the vote total is, and I will vote in just a moment. Please continue.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Let's go back.
And I will vote aye as well. Thank you so much.
Okay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and thank you again to the zoo folks that are here today and all the work you're doing. Go get these baby elephants born if you could. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, PUD 2024-00014, Zone Change Request in the County From RR Rural Residential District to PUD Planned Unit Development Number 132 to Permit Outdoor Recreation, Entertainment, and Event Center in the County Located One Quarter Mile West of North Second Avenue and One Quarter Mile North of East 119th Street.
Okay, good morning, Scott Waddle.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. Let's see, there we go. All right, so as you heard, with this application, maybe I'll wait just a couple of minutes real quick. Here we go. With this application, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from rural residential to planned unit development, which is a custom zoning district. This item is being heard because protests have been received against the application and because were public comments received on the case at the M A P C meeting, which is the, M A P C stands for the Wichita-Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. About the property, the site is generally located north of 119th Street, immediately to the west and south of the Mulvane city limits and east of the Arkansas River. The subject site consists of four ownership parcels, is approximately 160 acres in size, zoned rural residential, and developed as an outdoor recreation area with related structures. The property is currently operated as a membership-based outdoor recreation area with entertainment events that occur through the year, periodically through the year. The subject site is located within the urban growth area and urban area of influence for the city of Mulvane. I've got some maps that'll show that in a moment. In terms of the request, the applicant has received notices for the following violations. One is operating use that is not in compliance with the Unified Zoning Code. The second is for building structures without permits. The applicant has indicated they are requesting the rezoning in order to bring the existing uses into compliance with the zoning code, and also to expand permitted uses on the site for current operations and for future possible development. The requested custom zoning would allow uses permitted by right in the LI Limited Industrial District, except for those listed in the staff report and the PUD text. So, there are some of those uses that would normally be allowed that they have prohibited on the property. In addition, the requested custom zoning would also allow residential uses, they applied for from single-family to multifamily. The planning commission provided a different recommendation. We'll get to that in a moment. The requested zoning would also allow the site to be used for an event center in the county. This is where live entertainment is provided and alcohol may be available. An important note is that the site is large enough that this site could be permitted by right as it's currently zoned and under certain conditions, if certain conditions are met per the Unified Zoning Code, it could be used as an event center. The applicant requested that noise-generating activities such as music would stop at midnight Sunday through Thursday and 2:00 a.m. Friday and Saturday. Again, this was an area of conversation. I'll cover additional info in just a moment on that. In addition, the applicant also requested a limit of up to 18 events per year. The applicant also requested to allow RV camping as an accessory use to the events, and that that would be allowed plus or minus two days from an event. The requested custom zoning would permit a tavern drinking establishment, and the applicant is requesting to waive the 300-foot distance separation, distance requirement from residential zoning, school, church, or place worship public park. The applicant has indicated that the intent is only to allow alcohol during the live events. This intent is reflected in the PUD language that's recommended by the M A P C. Additionally, the custom zoning would allow recreation and entertainment outdoor. One of the provisions of the PUD would limit this use to private memberships. The hours of operation would be limited from sunset, from sunrise to sunset every day. The applicant's applied for zoning would not require screening, except for screening of the trash receptacles. The requested PUD includes parking requirements, which is identified in the staff report. In terms of context, property to the north is in the city of Mulvane, Zoned A1 Agricultural Transition District, and is in agricultural use. The property to the east, meaning abutting the subject site, is the BNSF Railroad. On the east side, so further east of the railroad tracks, properties are in the city of Mulvane, Zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and developed with single-family dwellings. Property to the south is in the city of Mulvane, Zoned A1 Agricultural Transition District, and in use for agricultural uses. Property to the west is the Arkansas River. So, this is the graphic real quick that shows the aerial. You can see the different uses there. Here's the zoning map, just so you can see that. Please note that in the city of Mulvane, all of the zoning colors show white because that's in the city of Mulvane, and we do not illustrate there are different zoning districts. In terms of the staff report, staff report provides information about the application screening, land uses, parking. In addition, attached to the staff report is the text for the custom zoning district, and you'll notice that there are red, there's red text and strikeouts in there, and those are the recommendations coming to you from the planning commission, from the M A P C. In terms of review, on September 26th, the M A P C held a public hearing for this item. The M A P C recommended approval of the request per the attached recommended PUD language. That vote was seven to two with one abstention. Sixteen members of the public spoke on this item at that public hearing. Eleven of the speakers were in favor of the application, five spoke in opposition. Those speaking in favor of the application identified that, primarily, they spoke to the positive economic impact that the business brings to the Sedgwick County and Mulvane. They also identified that if Sandy Bottom was not in operation, then they would visit other locations outside of Sedgwick County, with, I believe, one of the nearer ones being over two hours away. Those who spoke in opposition to the application spoke of concerns about the noise of vehicles and events, increased traffic on local streets, and safety concerns, with a single point of entry across the active railroad track to access the property. The planning commission, again, recommended approval of it with a number of changes from what the applicant had requested. Here are some highlights. That the hours of sale of alcohol would be restricted, would be reduced. They would go till 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and midnight Friday and Saturday. That the hours of live performances and shows would be required to stop, okay, that the hours of live performances and shows would be required to stop all noise-generating activities after 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and midnight Friday and Saturday. That a maximum of 24 events could be held in a calendar year, and that furthermore, that a maximum of two events could be held in a calendar month. Also, that any concert speaker systems would not be allowed within 300 feet of the east property line, also that they would be directed away from the residential properties to the east. And also that the M A P C recommended that the residential uses would be limited to one single-family dwelling for the applicant to reside on the site. The citizen advisory board for District 5 does not consider planning items. The subject site, as was mentioned earlier, is located in the urban area of influence for the city of Mulvane. Upon receipt of the application, M A P D, so the Wichita-Sedgwick County Planning Department, contacted the city of Mulvane to notify them of the application request, whether or not their planning commission would like to hear the item. Mulvane planning staff indicated that their planning commission did not want to consider the item, but forwarded comments from their public safety department expressing concern regarding the access to the property. Forty protests were received against the application. Those totaled just over 20%. You've seen the report, it's 20.41%. It exceeds the state statute threshold of 20%. Therefore, any approval by the Board of County Commissioners would require a supermajority of four or five votes. In terms of recommended action, it is recommended the county commission adopt the findings of the planning commission and approve the zone change request. Alternatives include the following. You can override the planning commission recommendation, make alternative findings, and deny the application. That would also require a supermajority of four or five votes, or as always, you can return the case to the planning commission for further consideration with a statement specifying the basis for the failure to approve or deny it. And again, that would require just a simple majority. So, with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and maps for the area. So, here's the aerial showing the property outlined in the aqua color there. You'll notice the dashed pink lines, those are the city limits for the city of Mulvane that are showing up. This is the zoning map, as we looked at earlier. Again, this property is surrounded to the north, south, and east by the city of Mulvane. This is the map from the comprehensive plan showing the, or this is, sorry, the urban areas of influence map, which is from the zoning code. areas of, urban areas of influence map, which is from the zoning code, which matches with the comprehensive plan. So it is in both their urban area of influence and urban growth area. This is a map showing floodplains in the area. Here is the protest map and the notification area. Again, the protest was just over 20%. This is the PUD document that was submitted. So when we receive the documents, they come as oftentimes large graphic documents with the text written into it. We have added the text as an attachment to your documents, to your staff report. This is the maps, the comprehensive plan maps from the city of Mulvane. Here you can see that the property is identified in that purple color, which is proposed to be industrial in the future. Here is a zoomed-in portion of that map, again, showing potential industrial as the recommended use in the future there. Here are photos from the site. This is a railroad crossing to access the property. This is looking away from the site. Some of the other surrounding properties to the east. These are the railroad tracks. This is looking to the south on the west side of the railroad tracks. This is looking at the entrance to the property with the gate. Looking at some structures on the property. Tree line to the east, to the south, to the north. This is further north of the property. It's a crossing that is not in place at this time. All right, and with that, I'll pause, I'll stop for any questions.
Okay, very good, Scott. Thank you for that briefing. Before we move on with questions directed specifically at you, I want to give commissioners an opportunity to relay any expertise communication they may have had on this case. Commissioner Meister?
I haven't had any direct conversations, but I believe I had a couple of emails of expertise communication, but I'm interested to hear what goes on today. I haven't had any direct expertise contact.
Yeah. I have also had no expertise communication, maintain an open mind. Excited to hear more during the hearing.
I've received an email, but that's it. Have an open mind. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have received emails, phone calls, and have talked to some of the folks, both face-to-face a couple of times. But having said all that, I am absolutely neutral in this and unbiased. I'm able to make a decision today based on the evidence, but we'll see how my pain meds treat me today, so reserve the right to maybe not vote still. We'll see how this goes. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, any questions for Scott at this point in time? Okay, seeing none right now, stay tight, and we'll, is the applicant here today? Okay, welcome. We're welcome to, applicant is here, our county clerk gave you five minutes, you're welcome to address the commission, and welcome.
Kim Edgington, PSC Consulting Agent representing the applicant. Aaron Lonergan is also here. If you have questions of him, he is available. First of all, I would like to thank MAPD staff. We have been working on this project for quite some time. It has taken a lot of effort on their part and they've been incredibly cooperative and communicative with us, and so we, we do appreciate that. And we first want to let the record reflect that we are completely in agreement with all of the conditions and restrictions that the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission placed at their meeting when they recommended approval of this project. So just let that be clear, that those are, we are completely in agreement with those. We developed this PUD to provide protections for this property. As was mentioned, the Mulvane Comprehensive Plan recommends this property for industrial use. However, this PUD provides a lot more restrictions and protections on the property than what would be allowed in the Limited Industrial Zoning District. So Scott outlined those very well as far as restrictions on the time limitations, the number of events that can be held, that we have voluntarily restricted any activity in the east 300 feet of that property, essentially moving all the activity as far away from that residential, excuse me, residential area as possible. Plus, you have a significant amount of railroad right-of-way in there and the railroad itself. It's a very active line there. We estimate anywhere from 18 to 40 trains go through that track every day. And as Scott also mentioned, that due to the size of this property being a very large piece in the rural residential district, an event center would be allowed by right currently, which would not have nearly the amount of restrictions that we have included as part of this PUD. We got here today because of the fact that the outdoor recreation and entertainment portion is not currently allowed under the RR district. So we have included that. The applicant, when they started this activity about five years ago, on the advice of their legal counsel, was informed that if it was operated as a membership-only private club, that that would be permitted. But as we've kind of fleshed through all of this process and MABCD has gotten involved from an enforcement standpoint, the outdoor recreation and entertainment portion, because it's considered commercial, is not allowed in the RR. So by providing this PUD, we have covered those things and also tried to anticipate what might happen in the future and provide proper protections for the neighborhood. We do understand that the property will have to be platted because we will seek commercial building permits for the buildings that are on-site and any other future buildings. So that will require plating and issues such as access will be addressed as we go through that plating process. Whether that is through, that should be through the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission as well, that the plat will be submitted to them for their review. We are working on some secondary points of access at this time as well along the railroad right-of-way, working with the railroad to see what options we can come up with to avoid just a singular point of access and at least having some emergency secondary-type access. So today, I know that there are several people here in the audience expressing their support and opposition as well. I do have here some letters of people supporting this project that were not able to be present today, so if I may give these to Madam Clerk for her to distribute.
That'd be great, we'll submit it to the record, yeah. I would also note that I received a letter from Off-Road Motorsports, one copy, I'll make sure the commission has a chance to review before.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
So in light of the restrictions that we incorporated through the PUD and the recommendation of both staff and the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, we are respectfully requesting that you all look favorably upon this request. The benefit.
No, go ahead.
The benefit overall to the city of Mulvane over the last five years has been substantial in terms of economic benefit. Most of the members that belong to this organization are not citizens of Mulvane, so they are bringing in outside dollars, supporting restaurants, businesses, convenience stores, also holding events that benefit the community at large. Fourth of July fireworks, shows, fundraisers. So we ask for your support today.
Very good. Kim, could you, what was your last name again?
Edgington.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I had it correct. Okay, Commissioner, thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thanks for being here today. I just quickly read through the emails that you provided. How many of these are adjacent or close to this facility? I noticed ones from Andover, but I didn't know where the other ones were from.
These are Cedric, mostly Cedric County citizens, aside from the Andover resident. They are members of the, they are members of the club and do the outdoor recreation here on the site.
Okay, so, so they're not going to be neighbors that?
No, they are not adjacent to the property.
Good. And from, we got some pre-briefings on this and it sounded like, and you can clarify for me, it sounded like one of the reasons that this came up was because from the pictures we saw that there's a building on-site. Did you all get a building permit and comply with all the regulations for building that building?
Right now, those are all just prefabricated buildings, so the owner was not aware that there was a need for a commercial building permit. But as part of this process, we will now go back and obtain commercial building permits for all of those buildings and any other future buildings, that they will go through the process of MABCD for approval, along with the plating.
Okay, but it sounded like, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like this has been in process for four or five years and that just now we've discovered that?
In this last year is when the enforcement issues have arisen and are bringing us today to bring the property in compliance.
Okay, but if you're going to run a, some kind of a venue, wouldn't you think that you'd go out and find out what the rules and regulations are for that before building buildings and so forth?
Well, as I had mentioned, the applicant did consult legal counsel and because it was being operated as a private, membership-only facility, the advice at that time was that that would be permitted.
Okay, and what guarantee do we have going forward that you'll comply with whatever is in this PUD?
Well, the provisions of the PUD will be tied to the deed of this property and will be enforceable through the Cedric County Code Enforcement Department. They will, and they will not issue any building permits until the proper plating has been completed. That will be the first step. And so that will go through the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission for their approval and we will not be able to obtain any building permits until that is complete.
Okay, thank you. I saw my questions right now.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for the applicant? And again, Commissioner Howell, if you just take your mute off and just holler at us, get our attention, we'll make sure we honor any questions or comments that you have. Okay, seeing none at this time. Kim, thank you so much, we appreciate you being here. And at this part of the hearing, I would officially open up the public comment, the hearing for public comment. So what we'll do is just call your name and I'll give you the person who's also on deck. We have just a few people that are here to speak today on public comment. Our county clerk will keep a timer, five minutes. When you come to the podium, if you can give your name and address for the record, we certainly would appreciate it. First up in public comment is Debbie Pryor. And then after Ms. Pryor, you'll see, we'll have Michelle, I believe it's McElory.
Good morning. Debbie Pryor, 3911 East Funston, Wichita, Kansas. I also used to live in Mulvane and I did back up the property when I lived there, but it wasn't a venue at that time. But I know that one thing that's been a concern is the noise, but the concern of the noise was put to rest, in my opinion, because the day they were talking about was the rodeo. So there are other venues around there that make noise just as well, but they are allowed. So if we base it on just the things that the neighbors are going to complain about, then we will not progress in making Mulvane a bigger city and a tourist attraction. Jeep people are a family. They like to go down there and yell, let off steam, not destroy. Aaron kicks us off if we get bad. He keeps us in line. But we like to, the fireworks. I go back to the fireworks because I went out there and I was so impressed. I'd been to Derby's, I'd been to Andover's, I'd been to Wichita's, then I went out and saw his. It was so organized, there was no way anybody could get hurt, and it went on forever. It was beautiful. I recommend if you guys approve this, which I hope you do, that you come out next year and watch it, because it is gorgeous. I found out about it this year because I pulled my Jeep out of the garage. I don't usually take it out of the garage. I've got, it's my show car, it just sits in the garage and looks pretty. So I don't go out in mud, I go out there for the events just to see stuff. But I found out about it and I was impressed with it. If he isn't allowed to do the events, though, I won't go down there because I don't go down there to get muddy. You know, and I know a complaint was the mud. Well, do you wipe your feet every day and not get mud on your carpet? Because it's the same thing, you're going to get mud regardless where you're at. Do you wash your tires before you leave your driveway, before you pull into your driveway? No. So you're going to get mud or dirt or nails or something and bring it to your house. It's not about what's coming out of Sandy Bottom because that's nature and we can't curtail nature. It's going to be there whether we like it or not. I love the place. I'm starting my Jeep, I'm going through my second childhood, I guess, I'm starting my Jeep thing at this point. I've had it in my veins since I was 15, but you know, as I said, it's set in the garage and now I want to go out and enjoy it. We have coming up a toy run. It won't end there this year, but last year it ended there and it was phenomenal. So we do do good things for the community as well. It's not just all about going out and, you know, sitting at Sandy Bottoms and, and having events there. It's a community thing. And if Mulvane wants to grow and get on the map, they need to be open to items like this because you can't get on the map and not open up and have the public come in. The last event I went to, I sat with a couple and talked to them and they had drove four hours to get there, not to mud, but to see the fireworks. Because they were like me, an elderly couple, and they didn't want to get their Jeep dirty or messed up, but they wanted to see the fireworks and have the camaraderie. And that's where you can get it. And these people, my Jeep, when I pulled in there, the clutch went out. I had no tools except for a set of pliers and a screwdriver. Some guy pulled up, he handed us these tools, said, "Oh, get them back to me later." And then another guy pulled up, said, "Well, you need help?" And he jumped in and helped. You know, they would do that for any of the neighbors as well, going out of there. So that's pretty much all I've got to say. I think it does help them economically down there. I know I spend money when I go down there. And you get to see other things that are in Mulvane. I now vet in Mulvane. You know, there's other things down there that will pull you down there. If you get in the city for one thing, you're going to see the other and you're going to bring your money in. Thank you for your time and listening.
One second, Ms. Pryor. Commissioner Dennis?
Just to clarify, you live in Wichita and not next, next to the facility down in Mulvane?
Currently, I live in Wichita.
Thank you, that's my only question.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Pryor, thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next up, Michelle McElory.
Good morning. My name is Michelle McElory, address 533 South Sunny Point Court, Wichita, Kansas. I have known Aaron Lonergan for over 20 years and I think it's very important for you all to know his personality and what big of heart he has. He gets fulfillment in helping the community and bringing people together for camaraderie and seeing each other develop relationships. And so when he has his Sandy Bottoms, there's people that come out and bring their kids and they're off their tablets, they're out playing with their side-by-sides or in Jeeps. And I think it's very important, this day and age for mental health, that something like this is available nearby. And, and like she said, that the, the revenue for Mulvane is actually benefiting it. In my opinion, that I would rather have Sandy Bottoms there than industrial park. But again, like I said, it's very important that we know Aaron's heart. He loves to help other people, his business that he had prior to this, he extends any, any help, so he gets fulfillment from that. It's also important to note that last year, there were several charities that we were able to raise over $50,000 for. So, and then due to the PUD and process has prevented us from, from doing this. So we were able to donate 2,500 turkeys to the local church there in Mulvane. And I, I love to go out there. It gives me peace and joy and the busy hustliness of, of work and, and the city life. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, very good. Good. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, you live in Wichita or in Mulvane?
Wichita, Kansas.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Okay. Other questions from the commission? Michelle, thank you. Appreciate your comment. Okay, next up, Aaron Lonnigan.
He's the applicant.
The applicant is the agent that was, so you're the applicant, but if you'd like to wait, I'm totally okay with that. Yes, certainly. Tim Huntley, and then Patricia Ponder.
Good morning. Tim Huntley, 3 Willadel Court, Mulvane, Kansas. I'm also on the council of Mulvane. We don't really, I mean, I'm not speaking for the whole group, I should just speak for myself, but the real problem is the access. I mean, she just said there's 18 to 40 trains across those tracks, and they stop sometime. So there is no way to get in or out of that property. It is landlocked. Which is not Mulvane's fault that you bought property that's landlocked. There's agriculture on both sides of you. You can only go across the railroad, which was used for a farmer to use to bring his equipment into the field. Is only the reason it's there. But since then, there has been a guy that has annexed, and he has his driveway, but he has to have the insurance and all that through the railroad, because it's a liability. So this is a one lane. So if he brings in 500 cars, they're going in and out on one, I mean, they all got to go in and come out the same way. There's no way for emergency vehicles to get there if the train is on the tracks. So, and he doesn't seem to want Mulvane to annex it, so yet we're going to have all the expense of providing everything to them, you know, police, ambulance, or whatever medical they need, because we're so far out in the county, the county's not going to come out, they're going to expect Mulvane to do it. You know, because of the cooperative, that's the way it works, we would be the, but if we can't serve it, if there's a train on the tracks. And which it has happened, that there was a train on the tracks, and some of the people drove across the field of the farmer to get to 53 Highway, because there was a train on the tracks, so, and tore up agriculture land, his crops that were planted. And I think he sued them for that.
Heard of what?
Oh, yes, that has happened. Because they said that you...
If we can limit comments to the commission, that would be helpful.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. But anyway, yeah, that was told to us and said that the landowner did sue them, and that you gave up their membership. But hey, I don't think we have a problem with the membership thing, but also, these residents all live there, so then all that traffic is coming through their neighborhoods. All that mud that she talked about now is getting on the city streets, because it comes from city. Really, the crossing is in city property. It's a building that goes over the cross, anyway. But anyway, so that's just going, there's a lot involved. I don't think they mind it the way it is, because it's not so much, but if you're talking a venue, how many people are you talking about that are going to come in and out, use our streets, and we're getting nothing for it? Oh, yeah, a few taxes, "Oh, if we put commercial property out there, yeah, we're going to have a lot of tax money." I mean, but, you know. So, anyway. But that's what I have to say.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions and comments.
Yeah, please. Go ahead, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, you're on the city council, is that correct?
Yes.
And did the city, did you, okay, I know you're speaking as a citizen today, not as a member of the council, is that correct?
Correct.
And what's your home address relative to this subject site?
Well, my home address is 3 Willadel Court, Mulvane.
How close is that to this?
It's off of K-15, right here. Oh, can you see? See where it says St. Louis Drive?
Okay. Just, as a bird flies, though, about how far?
Yeah, it's a ways away.
Okay. A couple of, so the city council did not register an official position on this case, even though this is called industrial in their comprehensive plan, it chose not to register an opinion on this property, on this rezoning. Do you know why that is?
Well, I think the problem relies that we didn't know anything about it. Usually that goes through the planning committee, and we wouldn't even get it. But then when the planning committee decided not to have a decision on it, then when we had citizens show up, then it became our problem, because, and we weren't told anything about it until that point. So...
Did you guys get a briefing on this as a council, to make sure that you understand what's being discussed and what's been asked of y'all?
I mean, yes, but there, I think what the city wants is for it to be annexed.
Yeah, it's obviously too large to be annexed unless it's done by petition of the landowner.
Correct.
So there may be some reasons why he doesn't want to do that. You know, the activities out there, again, I'm not suggesting he does this, but they say he wanted to use his unincorporated property for things like, you know, shooting event, or he has bonfires, for example, or has other things that he might want to use, much like people in the county sometimes will do. Not to mention the main activity there of having four-wheelers do what they do. It may not be conducive to be inside the city for lots of reasons, actually. So that really isn't our consideration today as to why they're choosing not to be in the city. That's kind of another decision that they need to make if it's... But my question to you, I guess, is there are rodeos that happen on the west side of the tracks. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
What happens if an accident happens over there and there's a train blocking the access?
They wouldn't block the access, because we have fire and ambulance out at the casino. So we can come in from the west side.
Isn't there the same access to this property? Because there's a road from the west side of the tracks that would take you straight to this subject property. If you wanted to get there, there's still a way to get there from the west side of the tracks?
No, there's not. There's railroad right-of-way, but there's no road.
Okay, well, I guess from, I'll tell you what, from my knowledge, apparently there is some type of an access along the edge of that railroad track, maybe owned by the railroad. I think that, again, I'm not sure that's been absolutely determined who owns that section of land there, but there seems to be some type of roadway access between the public works area of Mulvane and the subject property. So...
Yeah, that's railroad property, and I don't know how they can...
But it's not blocked off, I mean...
Huh?
It's not blocked off or whatever. I mean, the fire trucks or emergency vehicles could, in fact, traverse that road and get to the subject property. Could they, or could they not?
I don't know. It would be illegal, because it's railroad property. I mean, they would have to, that's why he keeps saying that they're working with the railroad, but nothing's ever came out of that, because I think they have to have insurance and all kinds of things to use that.
Again, just reflecting on it, and he's welcome, the applicant's welcome to correct any misstatements that I'm making today, but I understand that currently, there is not a railroad-guarded crossing there. However, if there ever was one, those trains have to do, you know, certain types of horn soundings as they approach those crossings. So that may be more trouble for people who live in that area to have that happen. But I do believe there is an option for a guarded rail crossing to be installed. It's very expensive, and how that would be done is really not my business today. But the access, the primary access is, again, as you stated, over the tracks, an unprotected crossing. And so therefore, there may be some insurance requirements. Again, that's a private issue between him and the railroad. But I'm just, you raised the issue of public safety access to the property, and what I was trying to ascertain, and anybody after you is welcome to clarify. But I would say that, you know, if there was something happening at the rodeo, there are emergency vehicles that respond to the west side of the tracks, and the same thing, I think, would be true in this case. But I don't know that for a frac. So if anybody who wants to clarify that detail would be welcome to make those comments. And that's all my questions for you today, sir. Thank you so much.
I was just going to say, the rodeo is on a street, on a city street. I mean, the city street runs into the railroad.
Understood. Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. I do have Scott, if, I have a question, if that's okay, to clarify some of the things here. This is an unincorporated Sedgwick County, so the sheriff's office and the Sedgwick County Fire Department have obligation here, correct?
Yes, they do.
Did either of those raise any concerns about access, or did they render any sort of opinion on this application?
No, they did not provide anything in writing on it, no.
Okay. Second thing is, because it's 160 acres by right, they can have an event center. If for some reason, or if the decision of the board is to deny the application, are they able to go back in and operate an event center despite that, simply because it's done by right here?
That is correct. It's provided that they can meet all of the provisions in terms of a site plan and where they would put porta-potties, those types of things. So there's the minimal amount of things that they have to be able to do. But yes, sir, they could...
This application actually makes the requirements more stringent on what, they can operate an event center by right here? That's the point I'm trying to...
Yes, sir. And does this application make it more restrictive? I think that is a fair statement, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear. Commissioner Dennis.
Scott, can you clarify something for me?
Yes, sir.
Does sheriff and fire weigh in on zoning and regulations, or do they come in and the plating?
They can do both. They are certainly involved in the plating process. In the zoning process, if there's an issue or an item that we think would be of interest to them, then we reach out to them. So we have done that with the sheriff's office in this case.
Okay. So you coordinated with the sheriff's office and the fire department before that this went to the M A B C?
With the sheriff's office, yes. We've let them know. With the fire department or fire district, sir, I do not know off the top of my head.
And what about E M S?
I do not know about that one either, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, Patricia Ponder. Five minutes, and if you can just state name and address officially for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. My name is Patricia Ponder. I live at 625 North First Avenue in Mulvane, directly adjacent on the other side of the railroad tracks from this proposed venue. The resident, I'm going to try to speak for my neighbors. I have neighbors here with me. We are not professional people. We're just constituents of the city of Mulvane and Sedgwick County. We're, may I show you a picture?
Ma'am, if you just want to reference it, we have the pictures. You can stay there. If you just want to reference which one, we actually have those in front of us as well.
Okay. On page 30, you can see at the bottom of the second page, picture at the bottom, the people who live in that house on the corner opposite the, they're on the corner furthest from, in the picture, directly at the end of that yard are the railroad tracks that divide Mr. Lonnigan's venue from our neighborhood. And we are an established, old rural residential community. That our housing development was developed in the 1950s. Our city street, our First Avenue Street, is one lane. Our houses have limited parking, because we're an older, established rural community. Many of the residents who live on this, along this area that you see in green that borders Mulvane, I live right in the center of that green line. My neighbors are on the corner in that house that's just off of the block from that, half a block from the tracks. The proposed venue is a concert venue. There's plenty of traffic already from this project. It is a, we have said nothing. We, you know, we are okay with four-wheelers running in the fields adjacent to our neighborhood. But to put a concert venue with basically a nightclub, you know, music in and out of their buildings that they propose and already have, that is going to be a high probability of a public nuisance to the neighborhood. They've had a concert there before, and it was, many of us called the city of Mulvane, and we discovered that coincidentally, four years ago, they had repealed the noise ordinance. It has been in effect since, you know, for many years, 20 years, probably. The city council, myself and several residents, many residents from the 178 homes that are directly adjacent to this proposed venue, have gone to the city council. We find that our city council has been heavily lobbied. Some of our community churches are heavily lobbied. We are not a lobbying outfit. I didn't know that I should be doing that kind of thing in order to defend my neighborhood. As the gentleman ahead of me has mentioned, that railroad crossing is a narrow for one vehicle to get in and out of that 160 acres. And it was like the gentleman said, it was basically for one farmer to be getting his equipment in there to, you know, to farm that area. We feel at least that we need more time as the residents and the community of 178 homes that are being directly affected. The rodeo, that's been there forever. I rodeoed when I was a younger woman, and I'm fine with the rodeo. We have, 30 seconds. We have a school that's also, if you look at the picture above, the one we were looking at, that's the school. There's children, there's already, you know, we have people picking their kids up. You add trucks with trailers and four-wheelers, which we have, that's very common now. And we have been able to adjust. We don't mind the Jeeps and the four-wheelers, but to change it into a venue of entertainment may not be good use of that property in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Okay, ma'am. One second, if you don't mind. Commissioner Howell, it looks like you...
I talked to you on the phone, Mr. Howell.
He's up there, yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. I'm having some technology challenges here. I apologize. Can you hear me okay today?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. I have just a question for Ms. Ponder. She mentioned something about a sound ordinance. I'd like to have Scott or someone speak to that. Was there a sound ordinance that was rescinded or, can someone please inform you on that?
Go ahead, Scott.
Commissioner Howell was asking about the noise ordinance that was repealed. Sir, it's my understanding that that was in the city of Mulvane.
Yes, but I talked to the mayor, and he said he had just reinstated a noise ordinance. I don't know. That's what the mayor has just recently told me.
Ms. Ponder, if you can come over to the mic, that would be helpful. That way we can, there you go.
Yes, the noise ordinance that was repealed four or five years ago, because of the complaints from the neighborhood, the mayor just informed me a couple of weeks ago that he had reinstated that noise ordinance. But as you know, no matter where you face concert speakers, they don't care where your noise ordinance is applied. They're going to, we'll hear the sound and the noise, no matter what the ordinance or where they face their speakers.
I guess my question is, and I'm not sure this is for you necessarily, but my question is, how does the city of Mulvane institute a sound ordinance for unincorporated Sedgwick County property?
We have, we would have no authority.
How that applies?
The city would have no authority at all. We would be, we would be subjected to it, but we would have no authority.
I'm saying in the past, when you're saying that there was a sound ordinance in the past that was repealed. If that was true, how does the city have jurisdiction over unincorporated Sedgwick County for a sound ordinance?
They don't. They don't.
And they did not before?
And they did not before, correct. But before, it was a... But before, it was a field of corn and wheat.
Right, right. I guess my question is, you made a comment regarding a sound ordinance being repealed or rescinded. I'm just trying to break down what your comment was. You made a comment about a sound ordinance being repealed or rescinded. I'd like to know what are you referring to then?
I think in what I have... I've been going to the meetings since we received this... The first notice we had was from Sedgwick County, when we received the letter saying that this zoning was being applied, was being requested. That was the first we heard, because the City of Mulvane had not notified the residents that are adjacent of any notice of this until Sedgwick County sent us a letter. That was September 28th, so we have had no time to ramp up to defend ourselves.
Okay, just to be clear, and I don't want to... I don't need to go back and forth with you necessarily, but to be clear, the county's following our processes and procedures. We are doing exactly what is required in a case like this.
Yes.
I just wanted to ascertain the truth about the sound ordinance that you made a comment about, sound ordinance being repealed. I just want to ascertain, what exactly are you talking about?
Oh, because of the concert they were having, not from the rodeo, because we live with the rodeo, that's fine. It was because of the concert that was at Sandy Bottoms. That's where the residents in this area called the city, and we found that there was... They couldn't do anything anyway, that it had been repealed.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments, Mrs. Ponder. Thank you, it's all I have for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ponder. Appreciate you, thank you so much. Okay, Erin, you had signed up. At this point in time, what I would normally do is close the public comment section and allow the applicant and the agent, since you guys would like... Would you like to just speak together to finalize?
I think we're done with public comment, so I'll officially close the public hearing, and then allow the agent and the agent applicant to come up and... For some final comments.
Okay. Just to clarify a few points, that we recognize that there are other facilities, other activities in the area that are also generating noise in this area. I had mentioned that we have not held any events on this property since we started this zoning process, and Mulvane has continued to receive complaints, though. So it is clear that those complaints are not related to this facility. So the reason that the Council of Mulvane did not provide any input is that this would actually go through their planning commission, their planning director, and their planning commission members did not opt to have this heard by their planning commission. So we did send out the... Metropolitanary Planning Department sent out the required legal notices to all of the property owners on the 1,000-foot ownership list, so there has been proper notification. There have also been some discussions in front of the Mulvane Council that there was no decision made on. So, and just to clarify some other issues, there is not a nightclub being proposed on this property. That is not in the language of the PUD. It is not part of what they intend to operate. So a lot of the issues that have been brought up today are truly plating-related regarding access issues. There is an access road that runs along the west side of those railroad tracks that is on railroad right-of-way. If needed, that is a path that emergency vehicles could use. And as I'm sure we are all aware, at that point, you know, at the point of an emergency, emergency services don't generally check to see if they are allowed to legally be on that property. They're going to use whatever means necessary to do their job in a way that they excel at. So we do continue to work with the railroad to formalize that access so that it can be put on all the GIS systems so that it's very clear that that is available for the safety of this property. And the property does have... It does have access to public street right-of-way. This property directly abuts public street right-of-way, and we do have a proper permit through the railroad to access over the tracks. Do you have anything else you want to add, Erin?
This is back to Jim Howell, the question he was asking about her chain... Or getting the time changed. Mulvane, we've had four hearings at in the last two months since this all started, and they did discuss that they changed the city ordinance on noise because the rodeo had an event that people complained that it was us, and it went on until 3:00 in the morning. So they had a hearing. One of the gentlemen's here from Mulvane can correct this, and they changed it to city limit time for them that didn't have anything to do with the property. It was because of the activities. And that rodeo is now renting it out for music events as opposed to just a rodeo. We do get blamed for that, and that's fine. We know it's not us, but we're getting all the repercussion from everything for it. Anything else that really needs to be known is, yes, I have done this for so... Five years. As a membership-based deal, we do activities together as a group. We try to come together. We have... Most of you know there's Jeeps in Park City. Jeeps does not allow Jeeps or side-by-sides. There's dirt bikes and motorcycles only. So in Wichita or the surrounding areas, within three miles, there's nothing like this to do, or three hours. There's nothing like this to do in our area, so that's why we do what we do. It keeps people off farmland. I've never been fined for or been sued by anybody going across a piece of farmland. If that's brought up, it's new to me. We've kept people off the farmland, if anything. So about that, I mean, any questions you guys have, I'm willing to answer. Oh, building permit, I guess?
Yeah, one thing related to the... Back to the plating issue and the fact that Mulvane does not have jurisdiction at this time. Once this property is platted, it will be eligible to be annexed into that portion. That platted portion of the property will be eligible to be annexed into the City of Mulvane. Therefore, they will be able to operate under all of the restrictions and conditions and enforce those of the PUD. Any noise ordinance that they have in their codes, any traffic issues, their code enforcement police department will then be able to enforce all of those issues. And then that property will be brought onto their tax rolls. So not only do you have the economic benefit of bringing all of the members, spending money at the Mulvane businesses, but it will also help to increase their tax base.
Question on that last comment. Are you saying that there will be an application for annexation into Mulvane? Is that what I heard?
Well, according to the Kansas State Annexation statutes, once this property is platted, it is eligible to be annexed unilaterally by the City of Mulvane.
Okay, okay, understood.
Yes, and we would not oppose that.
Okay, understood. A few questions. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on one of the comments you just made on the plating. I know this is a zoning case today, so... But you brought up plating, so I do have a question on it. You said that you may approach to look at a portion of that for plating. Does that mean you're not going to plat the entire 160 acres?
Well, because of some things that were mentioned earlier, there are still activities that will be going on that would be more appropriate to be located in Sedgwick County. That portion where there are buildings, where we need to apply for commercial building permits, and where the access is located, that is a portion of the property that we expect maybe five to seven acres of the property would be platted and then annexed into the City of Mulvane.
Okay, so you're only looking at going back and plating five to seven acres instead of all 160?
Right. I mean, the expense of plating 160-acre parcel when it's only being used for trails is exorbitant. And so therefore, we would limit that area of plating to that portion of the property where there's parking and restrooms and facility, building facilities and the access.
Okay. Once again, this is a zoning case. It has nothing to do with the decision on the zoning. I just wanted to clarify one of your statements. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant and the agent?
Chairman, I've got a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
That's okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, well, thank you. So in the past, I understand there have been people who have used this property for similar activities. It did not have permission to be on the property. They accessed the property maybe different ways, how they got back in there. Can you speak to kind of the historical use of this property for people with four-wheelers? I mean, I know this has been something that's gone on, I think, for a very long time. Can you please describe that for me?
Well, the access to the trails and the river area, people have used this, I mean, snuck on this property. I'm sure a few of the people that have spoken today that live in Mulvane can tell you they've snuck on this property when they were younger. It's just, it's gone on for 50 years, if not longer. We have people, older people that come out that are members that tell us, you know, hey, I used to come ride my motorcycle, this is where I learned to ride a four-wheeler, this is all this. We don't allow those things on it. So we have it blocked where they can't access it from the highway anymore. They have to come through my gates, we have control over it. There's the access to the river, people come from Derby, people come all down the big ditch. We don't want that. We don't... We're trying to give them a place to play rather than sneak on people's property. To me, it's trespassing. We've ran a lot of people off from it over the years. It took a long time to keep all the motorcycles and four-wheelers off, to let them know that this isn't what we do. The liability is higher. If we're not doing this, it's going to be seat belts and roll cage-type vehicles, and that's all. It still goes on today. We fight with people that come down the river and come up on the property, but it's not... We just tell them, hey, this is what we do, please stay off our property. We're not coming on yours, don't come on ours. Come through our gate.
And you've been operating some kind of... Some of this activity there for a number of years, I think you said four years or maybe a little bit longer. Excuse me. Have you had members of the community complain in any way during that time? Have you had very many complaints?
We've never had anybody from Sedgwick County reach out to us besides the zoning as of now. When I first bought this property, I had a meeting with zoning to try to get this all put in the works to do, and it was during COVID, so we never met face-to-face or really got to discuss. Their concern was the railroad crossing, that's why we didn't proceed any further. So I just talked to them and basically said, well, we'll become a members-only place, and then we won't have the public. And we were told we could do this off of 160 acres or 120 acres or larger. We were allowed to use it as an event center. So that's what we've done, and that's how it's been. We've never had Sedgwick County come knock on our door and say, here, here's a citation for doing this because of this, until Kelly Dixon got with me and said, here, you know, we need to change these things. So that's what we're here for. Now we're trying to change it.
If you decided to run an event center, are there any rules associated with like hours of operation, or how many events per year, or how many people you could have on the property?
Yes, during the mapping with Sedgwick County, they came up with, I think we asked for 12 or 18, they gave us 24. We asked for hours of operation, and they turned back, and even... We're willing to work with it. We're doing everything that they want in the city limits, even though we're in the county. We're not trying to change it in anything like that. And being an event center, I guess we should ask is, it's kind of like the fight with the jam-jam, you know? Looking for a piece of property to use. This is kind of what this would be used for. I don't want people to think it's a bar or a tavern or a nightclub or anything like that. It's just if we chose to build a wedding venue, there's going to be music. They could serve alcohol. I don't drink, I don't need the alcohol.
Let me interrupt you, Erin, I'm sorry. What I'm asking, if this was... If this zoning, if this zoning application was denied, under current law, under what you're allowed to do by right, is there any rules currently for the number of people or the number of vehicles or the hours and things like that? Are there any rules currently in place that would be...
There are some very... There's some very limited restrictions in the zoning code, and Scott Wedle, I think, is probably looking those up right now. Significantly fewer restrictions on the by-right use as an event center in RR than what we have included in the PUD. There wouldn't be the limitations on the number of events per year, on the hours of operation. Those sorts of issues would not necessarily be limited in the event center by-right RR category. So that is one critical component that we have included in this PUD to guarantee those protections. And that, whenever... Yeah, sorry. Yeah, Scott's flipping through the zoning code right now. But it's really a very simple procedure to go through to be approved for that as event center, providing a site plan, demonstrating that you have proper restroom facilities, that you will provide security, and that's... It's very minimal as to what is required.
Okay. Well, that helps. So I guess I would say if this did not pass today, the idea that you would have an event venue that... Again, it might somehow speak to the number of people, the number of events per year, the hours, the noise, and the cars, all that stuff is something that we haven't interested in. But none of that is currently defined, but there is a way to do all this by right. So it would be something you'd have to negotiate all those things, but that could happen regardless of whether this zone change happens.
Right, that is allowed by right, and Scott's going to explain some of that.
Yes. So it's in the zoning code. This is by right for an event center in the county. And I'm not going to read every single one here, but I do want you to know that they... It talks about building occupancy established by codes, the fire code, building code, that they have to comply with all applicable codes, sanitation, life safety, et cetera. Seating and attendance at outdoor events limited to the maximum number of occupants permitted by the parking. So in that case, it's the parking that drives the occupancy for outdoor events. And it states that the required parking ratio shall be... It gives how many vehicles for how many people. Let me check this here. And also square footage as well. Then we've got drainage, setbacks of driveways and building areas from adjoining property, access control for the Sedgwick County Traffic Engineer signage for the signed code, service of food and drink, comply with all applicable regulations, including alcohol, portable toilets, and where they cannot be located. And then they've got to review a site plan, which specifies a number of these elements for review and approval by the planning director.
Curiously, MAPC's vote, Scott, don't go too far. I'm sorry, I may have to go back to the applicant again as well, but Scott, before you go too far, the vote at MAPC was a 7 to 2 to 1. I understand the 1, but the 2 that voted no, do they articulate reasons why they voted no?
I'm going to look through the notes real quick right before that, sir. My recollection, I do not recall that they did.
Yeah, I looked for it, I couldn't find it, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, my recollection is that they did not. I think in that case, it would just be, there were discussions about compatibility, similar to the discussion that's taken place so far about compatibility with the nearby residences.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong also. I know there were some buildings that were constructed without permits, and I understand that it is the intent of the applicant to bring all those up to commercial standards and get those permits and that type of thing. So is there any reason why we should consider any of that part of this discussion regarding that status as it relates to the zoning case, the zoning approval or not approval? Is that... Does issue of buildings have any bearing on the decision before us today?
I think there's a lot of different factors that could be considered, but what I would point out is that in the PUD text, there is a condition that does state that they would bring all of the buildings on the property into compliance with codes as a condition of the PUD, and that if the conditions of the PUD are not complied with, then they would risk actually losing the PUD altogether.
Okay. All right. And then I guess I have one more question for the applicant, one more time. And I don't mean to, if this is considered, you know, non-disclosure information, that's fine, but I would like to ask the applicant, in terms of number of members or the number of, I guess, the reach of this opportunity for people to do this type of activity, how far away or how many members can you... If you feel like you want to quantify, I'm just curious, how big is this? You have members from how far away and how many members per... Do you have members from how far away and how many members per year, that type of thing?
Well, we have people that come from, I mean, we've had people from Texas come down and stay for the weekend to play. People are always looking for something different to do. We're flatland, we're not the Rocky Mountains, we're not falling off cliffs or things, so we're not getting big groups like that. But when people are traveling from one place to the next, they will stop because they know that's something that they enjoy doing. Member-wise, if we can refer to kind of how Jeeps is, they were a customer of mine, so I'm kind of familiar with how they were set up, and it's kind of what put me in this path. I believe they have 3,500 members at theirs, and it's dirt bikes and motorcycles. We run about 150 members for the year, which basically just covers the insurance and the cost and funds we do for, I believe, Michelle mentioned turkeys, she was wrong on that, it wasn't 2,500, it was 250, way off. But, but the events we do as fundraiser things, that's for stuff like that that we choose to do. The buildings that we do have were pole barns that were bought from Menards. They're stamped that they don't require a permit, but that's on their blueprint, that's not Kansas law, I found out. So when we chose to put those up, there's two of them, when we chose to put those up, we were told lean to, you can store equipment, you can use it as shelter, you can do what you want to do with it, as long as it's not completely enclosed, which it's not. It's open side on the west or the east and the south. We did close the west and the north because my daughter had a wedding up, wanted to get married, and I chose to use that as a facility to let her get married on. So we closed in a little piece of it.
I have three, I'm sorry, I have three more short questions. This is fairly simple. I think in the background here, I see that there's a commitment that you, for example, if there was a concert, the sound projection has to be to the west. Am I correct about that? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that is defined in the P, on the face of the PUD.
And, and again, there's also a natural, I've not been out there to look at this specifically, but the, the tracks are fairly significantly elevated above the ground level there. I don't know how far, but there is like a natural burrow from that, is that right?
They're approximately eight to 10 feet above grade, the railroad tracks are.
I, I know you have a fireworks event, that sounds like you've already spoke about that, so that's obviously a, you know, after dark event. How many, and this is not part of the application today, but I'm just curious to understand kind of your intent here. How many late night events a year, I mean, you talk about after dark events, keep that plan on having? Is there going to be quite a few, or?
Well, we're limited to 18, or 24 now, I believe is what they've done. We've never done that, we usually do four a year, which is Easter, Halloween, Fourth of July, and our Christmas event. Other than that, it's the members come out and play, and I haven't set a time limit to them, so if they're out there in the evening, I let them be, they're on camera, I'm on the property most of the time when people are out there. But they have a key card to enter the gate because they own a piece of the property.
Gotcha.
They have the right to use the property. I can't stop them, and I know some of the residents say they don't care about the Jeeps and the side-by-sides, and, and that's fine, but that's kind of why we're here, because of the recreation side of it. And the PUD just puts in that we can change those zonings to something else.
I think it's an important point to, to note. What Scott mentioned is that the limitation on the capacity for the event center as allowed by right is solely based on the amount of parking that one can provide. And with a site like this, 160 acres, there's a very substantial amount of parking that could be provided. So that, those event center by right activities could be rather, rather large. So these, these conditions that are part of the PUD are a good protection against that. So, and the, the buildings that are out there on site, if this were an agricultural use, those are more geared towards an agricultural type building that wouldn't necessarily, under these conditions, require the building permit. So this part of the PUD is just a way to guarantee that if there is going to be any occupancy with them, that they will meet all of the applicable commercial building codes.
All right, well, very good. That's all my questions for you all. Thank you, and again, thank you, Chairman, for your time to speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. One quick question. I don't think our appraiser drives around the county looking for buildings that get constructed. I think they found that mainly through building permits that get pulled. So since you've never pulled a building permit, but you've got a lot of improvements out there, have you been paying property tax on all those buildings?
I haven't paid on the buildings. We put them up this year for my daughter's wedding, basically, is what it was for, so.
So you have not been paying property tax on the buildings?
I haven't, I haven't annexed, or not annexed it, but platted it into anything because we weren't told we had to, being agriculture land and.
Yeah, once it's platted, that will go onto the tax rolls as a commercial, and it will be assessed in a commercial manner.
But ever since he built those buildings, that's an asset that he's had that he should have been paying property tax on, correct?
Right, that was just this year. And they're simply pole barns, as you said, from Menards. They're going to have a negligible.
Well, that one building doesn't look like a pole barn, it looks like a pretty substantial building.
It was a pole barn purchased from Menards, so the value is, is not great, but once that is all platted and.
But it is a value, it is an asset. Our taxpayers request us to pay property tax on assets.
Yes, which at this point, they, this property has now been flagged, and it will be reviewed by the Appraiser's Office, and, and in the next tax rule, that will be reflected.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Scott, go ahead.
Sir, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the question that Commissioner Howell had about the two votes at the Planning Commission meeting that were opposed to approving the rezoning. Those were from Commissioners Miles and Warren, and it appears that Miles was concerned about the, especially about the noise that would be generated from concert events. That was on page 18 of the meeting minutes. And then Commissioner Warren expressed twice concerns with the fact of the use taking place on the property in the unincorporated county while neighbors are in the city of Mulvane and the complexities that that would bring up in terms of enforcement of noise and issues. So just wanted to make sure I answered those questions fully, and thank you to Sam for pointing these out.
Okay, very good. Okay, we're done with public comment, bring discussion back to the bench. Any final questions or comments?
There has been a request to defer action until Commissioner Howell is at the bench and next Wednesday. So here shortly, I'm going to make a motion to defer this until Wednesday, November 20th, the vote portion only. We will not have any public comment, public comment is closed. So when we do take this back up, if the motion passes to defer, it will only be for discussion at the bench, and any questions Commissioners may have to staff, there will be no public comment. Is that correct, Counselor?
I think that's a fair thing to do as Chairman, I think you have that discretion, yes.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments before I make a motion? Okay. I move that we defer this matter to the Wednesday, November 20th BOCC meeting to allow for Commissioners to participate in further review, discussion, and voting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
I don't think my vote is substantial in this case. I think right now I need to abstain. I will be there next week to vote on the case, but today I'll abstain on this particular vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye, so we are deferring the vote portion until next Wednesday's meeting, BOCC meeting. Okay, thank you, appreciate everybody's comment. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, island annexation request by the City of Derby pursuant to City of Derby Resolution Number 23-24.
Hello, Samantha?
Hello. Samantha Siang, Assistant County Counselor. I'm here to present the City of Derby's request to island annex a parcel of land pursuant to KSA 12-520C on August 28th, 2024. Pleasantville Baptist Church, which is the property owner, requested that the City of Derby annex its property located to the southeast of the intersection of Rock Road and 63rd Street. On October 23rd this year, the City of Derby passed a resolution finding it was in the best interest of the public to annex this parcel into the city limits. They sent us a, they sent the county certified copies of the resolution and asked this board to make the requisite statutory findings. By statute, the board must make its findings within 30 days of receiving the city's certified resolution. I'm going to refer the board to the map on the screen. The proposed annexed property is approximately 39 acres and is outlined in yellow. An island annexation is when a property that is proposed to be annexed does not adjoin the city's contiguous city limits. The southeast, the southeast corner of the property appears to be touching the city limits, which is noted in green, but if you look at map, the next map, map number four. Well, map number four in your presentation materials will show you that there's, the southeast corner of the property shows there's a gap between the subject property and the city limits. State statute lays out three requirements for an island annexation to occur. The land is required to be located in the same county as the city, and that's the case in here. The owners of the property must petition or, or consent to the annexation, which they did apply to do. And then we need the board to make a finding that the annexation will not hinder, prevent proper growth and development of the area or that of any other city within Cedric County. This would be, requires a two-third vote. On your screen now, you can see is the map four that shows a close-up of the property, and you can see the gap that's between the city limits and the subject property, which makes this acceptable as an island annexation. The property is within the City of Derby's 2035 growth area. It is not located within the growth area of any other city in Cedric County. The property owner has indicated an intent to construct a future church on a portion of the property and then potentially sell the remainder to a developer for residential or commercial use. All of these uses fit within the comprehensive plan. Upon annexation, the city would provide police and fire services, which are currently provided by the Cedric County Sheriff's Office and Cedric County Fire District Number One. Current property tax to the county and Cedric County Fire District Number One is less than $120 per year. Upon annexation, Cedric County Fire Department would receive $43 less in tax revenue. I would note that in the staff report, I had mentioned that the county would receive $70 less in tax revenue, and that is a mistake on my part. Cedric County staff did not indicate any concerns with this proposed island annexation. So at this time, I would urge you to make a motion and findings once you've concluded discussion on this item. With that said, I will stand for questions and note that the Derby's Planning Director is here today and can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very good, thank you, Samantha. Appreciate the update. We've all been briefed on this matter and had discussion on this matter. So Commissioners, do we have any questions? Obviously, we have folks from Derby Planning here, we have Samantha. Any, any burning questions here?
Seeing none. I'll make a motion that we find that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other unincorporated city, forgive me, I'm going to start over, okay, Clerk? I move that we find that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located in Cedric County approve and sign the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye, motion carries, okay. Thank you, Samantha. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Ms. Hope Hernandez, welcome.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, Hope Hernandez is your Accounting Director. I'm here to present the Quarterly Financial Report for the fiscal activities for the first nine months of 2024. Both the report and the presentation are prepared by the Budget and Accounting Teams, so my thanks to them for their hard work and dedication in compiling this report for you. Reminder that this information is based on unaudited financial data and is subject to minor adjustments when we do the annual audit. You have each received a copy of the report, and it will be made available online at the conclusion of this presentation. So what we see on this slide is planned and expected results year-to-date in the operating funds on a budgetary basis. The county's property tax-supported funds, which include the General Fund, WSU, Aging, Highways, and Bond and Interest, are estimated to increase $9.9 million, and the largest part of this increase is $9.8 million that is estimated in the General Fund due to the anticipated increase in investment income. You will see a significant decrease of $23 million in the non-property tax-supported funds, which are estimated to decrease due to the previous ARPA allocation received, with expenditures expected to continue through 2026. So you will continue to see a decline in this fund as we continue spending down all of the ARPA funds. The Fire District is estimated to decrease $2 million due to a strategic drawdown of the fund balance that is planned to transfer to the Fire District Special Equipment Fund for upcoming equipment needs so that we don't have to pay by issuing bonds or entering into new leases for those equipment. The Enterprise and Internal Service Funds, which include MABCD, the Arena, Fleet, Risk Management, and Health Insurance, are estimated to increase by .7 million, and this is primarily due to an increase in prescription benefit rebates that were collected by HR. Overall, we expect a significant drawdown of 14 million on a budgetary basis, but we are projected to end the, end the year with $203 million in fund balance, so our financial position is strong. Now we will dive more into the county property tax-supported funds. On this slide, we show revenue and expenditures for the county property tax-supported funds, and we want to see a healthy gap between the two lines that are indicating revenue and expenditures. As you can see here, our revenues far exceed our expenditures, and this is due to the tax distribution calendar, where we get our tax revenues deposited in January and June from the December and May payments, so we always see this increase through the first half of the year, and then we continue to draw down those funds for the remainder of the year. The increase in revenues of $16.5 million is primarily due to an increase in assessed value of 9% for 2024, though the Commissioners reduced the mill levy rate to collect less than the total increase in assessed value. There was also an increase in investment income for $4.3 million and $7 million from the ARPA replacement revenue. An increase in expenditures of $9.5 million is mostly due to increases in personnel as a result of the compensation changes approved in the 2024 budget and adjustments made to the Sheriff Pay Plan in January of 2024. Focusing on, on some of the key revenues, we see that, recall that the Commission took action, as I mentioned earlier, to reduce the mill levy rate by nearly .4 of a mil last year, so that has resulted in still higher property tax collections, but not as high as the assessed growth value would be. The increase in ad valorem taxes of 7.8% was again due to the increase of 9% in assessed valuations for 2024. Sales and use taxes have increased in the first five of the nine months for 2024, overall flat through the last, the first three quarters from 2023 to 2024. Investment income has continued to increase due to strategic investment decisions and rising interest rates. rising interest rates. So nothing surprising here that salaries and wages and other personnel expenditures have increased, as again what we discussed earlier about the compensation changes that were included in the 2024 budget, including the implementation of the new general play pay plan and adjustments made to the sheriff's pay plan in January of 2024. Overtime decreased mainly in the sheriff's office as a result of more positions being filled compared to the first three quarters of 2023. And benefits, which are health and life insurance and retirement contributions, increased due to increased rates for 2024. Grant awards increased mainly due to the increase in assessed valuation, which caused an increase in the amount to WSU. So as long as the assessed value goes up, grant award expenditures are going to go up. Fee-for-service contracts decreased significantly in the sheriff's office due to a decrease in the out-of-county housing due to a decrease in the inmate population, as well as a deferral of the financial system replacement program within the IT department. Medical professional services decreased due to the decrease in the inmate population in the sheriff's office and the payment of one-time funding for an agreement with the KU School of Medicine to help fund the implementation of a child and adolescent medical fellowship training program in 2023. Now we're going to move into the Fire District General Fund. They have the exact same tax distribution cycle that the county does, so again, we hope to see a healthy gap between the revenue and the expenditure lines noted here. Revenues are twenty-three-point-one million, which is an increase of one-point-seven million compared to last year due to the increased assessed valuation. And expenditures are at seventeen-point-two million, which is an increase in expenditures of point-three million, primarily as a result of the increase in personnel due to those compensation changes that I mentioned earlier. All of these items are broken out in more detail on page thirty of your quarterly report if you're interested in looking at those items. The increase in personnel is due to implementation of the new fifteen-step pay plan in 2024. The large increase in equipment is due to an increase in cash-funded vehicles that were purchased. They purchased a brush truck in 2024 and purchased two squad trucks that were budgeted in 2023, but were not available until 2024. All other expenditures are that the commissioners authorized a two-year pay plan that, to do that station relocation payoff early, so in 2024, we made the final payment on that, so now it is completely behind us. Now we will dive into the county non-property tax-supported funds. The county has thirty-six operating funds that are not directly supported by property tax dollars, including federal and state grant funds. Previously, we had slides with COVID funding and then slides without COVID funding, so to simplify things, we put everything into one chart. The dotted lines are with COVID funding, and the solid lines are without, just our typical normal funding. As shown on the chart here, revenues through the first three quarters of 2024 were eighty-two-point-one million versus sixty-eight-point-one million for 2023, which is a fourteen-point-one million-dollar increase. The increase is primarily due to an increase in the comcare rate for billing, which became effective on one-one of 2024, as well as an increase in the KDADs revenue received by comcare, which is attributable to the timing of revenues received. Expenditures were eighty-nine-point-nine million versus seventy-two-point-one million for 2023, which is a seventeen-point-eight million dollar increase. The increase is primarily due to an increase in transfers out to the general fund for revenue replacement, as well as increase in personnel due to pay adjustments and increases in filled positions. This slide also shows revenue expenditures through the first three quarters excluding COVID. There were ten million dollar increase in revenue through the first three quarters of 2024 compared to that same timeframe in 2023 due to the increase in comcare's billing rate and the timing of revenue that was received. Without COVID expenditures, there was an eleven-point-one million dollar increase in expenses through the first half of 2024 compared to that same timeframe in 2023. This is primarily due to an increase in transfers out due to a transfer of ARPA funding to the general fund for revenue replacement, as well as an increase in personnel and adjustments Here we show the key revenues on a budgetary basis for the non-property tax-supported funds. The PPS one Medicaid fees, the increase here is due to an increase in comcare rates that we receive for the CCBHC services. State revenue KDADs, the increase here is due to the revenue received for the state mental health hospital project and by comcare due to the timing of the revenue received. Federal revenue, state pass-through, the increase here is due to the timing of revenue received by the Health Department. Here we show the key expenditures on a budgetary basis for the non-property tax-supported funds. Salary and wages, the increase here is primarily due to an increase in pay and an increase in positions that were filled. Employee benefits, the increase here is mostly due to an increase in retirement contributions and health life insurance premiums. Transfer out operating, the increase here is due to the seven million dollar transfer to the general fund for the ARPA replacement revenue that we discussed earlier. And other notable changes is the largest part of the other expenditures can be attributed to the design and the engineering fees, which increased by five-point-nine-nine million for the state mental health hospital, which the county is being reimbursed on all costs. Now we are switching from the budgetary statements to the accounting part of the quarterly report that is reported on a GAAP basis. This chart illustrates six years of historical trends of total fund balance on a GAAP basis. What the swings in this chart illustrate is the tax collection cycle, so the spikes show the revenue we received from the distribution of taxes, and the dips in the chart show where we are drawing down or using those funds. We ended Q3 with a one-hundred-and-sixty-one million dollar balance, which is a nineteen million dollar increase from Q3 of 2023. County policy requires a minimum unrestricted fund balance of twenty percent of our budgeted annual expenditures, and you can see here on the chart that we are at fifty-three percent with a hundred-and-sixty-one million dollar ending fund balance. The investment slide is an exciting one to talk about this year, as David Floyd, Brent Shelton, and the liquidity team have done a terrific job on staying top of market trends, the environment, and making sure that we're earning every single dollar that we can with our investment income. Just to give you kind of some context on the investment income is year-to-date actuals for January through September of 2024 is eleven-point-eight million, and in comparison to the same timeframe in 2021, our investment income was four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. It's went from four-hundred-and-sixty thousand to eleven-point-eight million dollars. The market value of the county's investment portfolio was three-hundred-and-fifty-three million in Q3 of 2024 versus three-hundred-and-forty-six million in 2023. The income that we received just this quarter was three-point-three million versus two-point-five million compared to last year. The current yield of the portfolio is three-point-six percent versus two-point-one percent for 2023. And per the county policy, the one-year Treasury T-bill is what we use for our benchmark, and that rate was the four-point-seven percent this quarter, and we're at three-point-six percent. And this is pretty good based upon the restrictions that are placed upon us to be conservative and to be safe, make sure we're safeguarding the county assets. So therefore, it will take us a while to catch up to the actual benchmark if we ever do, just because we want to be safe and follow the investment policy and the restrictions that are placed upon us there. The Federal Open Market Committee reduced the federal funds rate target from five-point-two-five to five-point-five percent, down to four-point-seven to five percent, and this is the first rate reduction since March of 2020. So this slide breaks out significant capital projects that we like to highlight. All active open projects are starting on page forty-seven of the report. They include the status, budget, how much is committed, et cetera. But here, we're just going to break out a few to speak about. So the first one is the adult detention facility lock retrofit, camera addition, and master control room. The master control room expansion portion of the project is complete. Locks and cameras in two pods have been completed, and work is underway on the third pod, which will be completed by mid-November. The general contractor ran all the conduits going to the pods in preparation for installation of cabling by September 2024. The conduits allow a path for camera, video cables, and power communication cables for the cameras and the locks. The next one is the household hazardous waste expansion. This project is a remodel of the existing facility and expansion to the north of the existing building, the metal building. The approximate expansion would be six thousand square feet. There is no need for land acquisition or additional parking. Construction has started, and the foundation is poured, and a structural steel is on schedule to follow. The next project is preventative maintenance. So Nova chip is a part of our maintenance program that we do each year on selected county roads. This specific maintenance project started on July eighth, 2024, and will be completed by October thirty-first, 2024. The contractor has twenty-four lane miles remaining out of the one-hundred-and-seventy-five lane miles included in this project. In total, project budget reflects all funding for preventative maintenance, not just the Nova chip portion. The next project is the bridge replacement on one-hundred-and-fifty-first Street. The bridge on one-hundred-and-fifty-first Street of Clearwater is being reconstructed. Construction began on December fourth, 2023. The project received four bids and was awarded to Don Linger and Sons Construction. The project was started in December 2023 and completed in September of 2024. This replaces the structure that was built in nineteen-fifty-five. It was structurally deficient and rated as being in poor condition. So to provide some more detail on the capital projects and kind of get away from the numbers and the verbiage a little bit, we have some photos here for reference. So this one, oops, this one here is for, the, this one, I'm sorry, this one here is for the preventative maintenance on the roads. The next two slides show the bridge replacement that I just spoke on. This was the bridge replacement on one-hundred-and-fifty-first Street. This is one view of it. This is the second view. And our last slide here, just wanted to leave you points after the first, for Q3 of this year. The pressures outside the county's control, we have inflations and interest rates, sometimes those work out in our best interests in terms of investment income, and sometimes they do not. The labor market, we have competition with our peers, as well as we're competing for the same people in Cedric County. Federal and state legislative decisions. County budget challenges or strategic use of one-time revenues. Meeting the community service expectations within communities' fiscal expectations. Ongoing workforce challenges, there's always something new coming up that we need to monitor, and just trying to make sure that we're competitive to keep our staff and then also attract new talent when positions open. And then year-end opportunities, investment income for tech, equipment, ARPA reimbursement for cost of government services, and CIP earmarks. So again, overall, what this report shows you is that we are in good financial condition. So with that, if you have any question, if you have questions, great. If not, I recommend you file and receive.
Okay. Hope, thank you to you and the budget team, and also to the finance team, CFO, your team in general, too. You guys do wonderful work on the budget, and these quarterlies are really helpful to understand the condition of where we're at financially in Cedric County. So great job on the report and all the work that you guys do. Commissioners, any questions? Really good data, really good report. And the investment income is, I think there was a suggestion that maybe we, that investment income, hopefully, we can maintain that type of investment income long into the future. I guess we'll see, huh?
Yeah. The bar is established.
The bar has been established. No pressure on the investment income. Okay. Well, I will make a motion to receive and file.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Hope, thank you again. Appreciate your report. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Cedric County, Kansas, establishing holidays to be observed in 2025.
Okay, good morning, Sheena, welcome.
Good morning. Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. There is a resolution presented in front of you to approve eleven paid holidays for the 2025 year. These are the same holidays that we proposed in 2024, and I know on Friday, there was some discussion at the agenda review, and I apologize for missing that, I was out of the office, but I am here to answer any questions you may have or concerns you have.
Okay.
Regarding the proposal.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Sheena? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Thanks, Sheena. I did want to discuss this again, because we've discussed it just about every year since we started. This adds eleven paid holidays. On the average, and I know that the longer you work for the county, why, you get more vacation days and more sick days. On the average, about how many vacation days does one of our employees have?
I don't know the average on the top of my head, but I would say it's anywhere between three to four weeks on average.
Three to four weeks?
Majority of employees, yeah.
And how many on average that you can't answer completely accurately?
I can get you the information on average. I apologize.
Sick days do they have?
Employees accrue on a forty-hour week ninety-six hours per year.
How many?
Ninety-six hours per year of sick, and you can roll that over every year, unlimited.
Okay. So besides a month's vacation and however many days, depending on how long they worked on sick days, then they're going to get eleven more days on top of that that are paid for by our property taxpayers?
That is correct.
And is there any reason when we've, I think we're pretty generous, four weeks of vacation and a lot of sick leave, is there any reason why that we couldn't say that out of those eleven additional days that you want to give, that they couldn't use one of those for a sick day or a vacation day?
More as a discretionary day?
We give them three to four weeks. Why couldn't they use one of those days off in place of something like Juneteenth?
That would be at the commission to take that off the recognized holidays. And if they, if that was removed as a recognized holiday and an employee wanted to take that day off, then they may have the means to do that through their accrued leave.
But we're pretty generous on days off, so there's no reason they couldn't use that day for a vacation day or a sick day.
It would be up to the employee if it was not approved.
Lindsay, how much did it cost us now with all the pay raises to give one day off?
Do you want to answer that? Okay. I have it written down if you need it. So we have had conversation, oh, sorry, Lindsay Povis, your CFO. So for the record, the extra cost of what we pay employees to actually work on a holiday over and above the holiday credit that we give employees is about a hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars now, including payroll taxes.
I want to know what it costs our taxpayers not to have people work.
So that cost is seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars now.
And that's based on the new?
Yes, that was, that is what we actually paid for our most recent holiday on Labor Day in September.
Okay. Well, I have concerns right now with, and I've had it ever since we started this, with our taxpayers, and we're trying to keep our property tax as low as possible, and they expect us, when we, they give us property tax for us to work for those dollars that we receive. And I just cannot for the life of me understand why that, because of all of the days that we are already giving them off, why we have to give them an additional day of and beyond. I think the ten are fine, but I have a problem with the eleventh day, and that costs those taxpayers close to a million dollars. And that's why I've never approved this, and I won't approve it today. I just wanted to make sure we brought it up today so that I could make sure that I made my vote count, and everyone go on record on what they're doing with spending almost a million dollars of property tax, when if someone actually wanted to take that day off, they could take vacation or sick day. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. So if this is related to the Juneteenth question, the state, does the state still honor Juneteenth?
Yes.
Is the state holiday?
Yes, they do.
And how many?
And how many, and so we have 11 holidays. Tom, do you ever called, how, how many holidays does the city of Wichita have?
Uh, I think the city has 12. They have the 11 plus a floater.
Yes, they have the 11 paid holidays that we are proposing plus one discretionary day for a total of 12.
All right. That's my question.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So state of Kansas has 11 paid holidays or?
The state of Kansas has 10 paid holidays plus one discretionary day for a total of 11.
And then the city of Wichita has 11 paid holidays. They match our same paid holidays and then they had, they add one discretionary holiday that we don't, we don't do the 12th one, correct?
I believe they call that a personal day for a total of 12.
Okay, understood. I just want to make sure we're clear. Okay. Uh, commission, any other questions?
Chairman, I'll take a question or two if it's okay.
Yes, certainly.
Um, so, you know, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree with some of the comments that Commissioner Dennis made earlier. Um, I would say it's been a couple of years now, but I, I keep bringing up this idea of, I guess there's two related topics to this. Number one would be personal time off is something we ought to be talking about in relation to, uh, vacation and sick leave, but I think it can possibly tie into this type of discussion as well. You know, I, I believe that, uh, I've, I've asked for, uh, planning again, or, uh, human resources to develop, if you will, a way for us to do a floating holiday. I would rather be more like Kansas. Um, I think that having some recognized holidays and then having, uh, something that people would be able to value, what day they, they prefer to take off, I think is better for our employees. I can tell you that we, we, we enjoyed President's Day and Juneteenth this last year, but I don't know a lot of people from the county that went out and did something specific before those two holidays, uh, you know, in relation to what they stand for. So we enjoyed the time off, but it's more just a day off and it wasn't really something that we really spent a lot of time thinking about, uh, what those holidays represent necessarily. Again, I support what they stand for. I think it's a great history in both cases, but again, this is a taxpayer money issue. And I think if someone values one of those two days or values a different day that we're not recognizing, they ought to have some option to take off the day that they value. And so I, I think having a floating holiday does make a lot of sense. And I, I don't know why it is, uh, I've asked for this in the past, uh, we've not made any progress on it. Um, part of me says that, uh, um, I wish that we could, uh, suspend this discussion and have a, you know, actually ask for a briefing on this idea of how, of a floating holiday because I think it's a better idea, um, rather than just doing 11 or 12 or 10 or whatever, I think to have a floating holiday ought to be part of this discussion.
Please, Sheena.
We did talk about floating holidays and, um, some of the issues that would bring up within departments, that not everyone would be able to take their holiday because we would still have to have offices open and maintain staffing. So there's no guarantee that someone would get that holiday off. Um, and I believe departments also reflected on, um, the ease of services when the department is shut down and knowing that is, that holiday is coming up. So we, we did circle back to that and I can, I can go back and find the, uh, follow-up to that. I just did not have that prepared today.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I, I guess my response to that is there are organizations all around us that seem to get by with it somehow. And, um, you know, Wichita has a floating holiday, it sounds like. So how do they, how do they manage this? If they, if they actually have one, how are they managing that?
Go ahead, Tom.
But we, we've talked about the floaters in the past. There's, there's a reason that a government recognizes a holiday, two reasons. The main reason is to honor and recognize whatever the topic is that we are talking about, whether it's a Veterans Day or a Juneteenth or a Christmas Day. It is a day that is important to our culture, uh, in this country. So that's, that's the reason to recognize a holiday. Then secondly, then, if you recognize the holiday, then the business is closed. And so if we go to a floater in lieu of another holiday, we have to, the commission has to, the people have to make a decision which holiday you want to cut. And Commissioner Dennis is correct, there are other days you can use vacation or sick, but the business remains open. So there is, there is a optic there that that holiday, uh, is not recognized by other organization because we're going to be open for business that day. Now you can take a vacation or sick day to be gone that day up to a point. Once the business stays open, we have to stay staffed. So you can let some people off that day, but not all people off that day who may want to take it. So we've had this discussion, there's, the concept of the floater is we'd have to cut a holiday. And secondly, then there are some payroll and some staffing issues that floaters give an organization a challenge to do. And we, I think we could probably overcome them. Clearly the city of Wichita does, they have a floater and they manage it, um, but not necessarily in lieu of an existing holiday. So we'd be glad to talk about this, uh, at, during budget retreat or any other time. That commission wants to talk about it and we're, we're, whatever the will of the people is, we will adapt to that.
Well, I, I, I think that the, where we're at now is a nice baseline for the holidays that we do recognize for the semblance of what they represent and why we, why we celebrate them. And, um, if there's a conversation, maybe the budget retreat would be a discussion on that for the floating holiday would be, in my view, it'd be on top of what we have with the current baseline to match what the city of Wichita does. The thought that we want to stay competitive, obviously in our benefits and the things that we do, um, with our competing local agencies, meaning the city of Wichita and the state of Kansas primarily, I think is important. The second thing too is, you know, we, we've done a really good job, this commission and the previous commissions have done a really good job in trying to build staff retention, attraction or retention. If you look at what we've overcome the last few years and where we're at today, um, I think that what we do is continue to build on that and not to draw back from some of those things. I'm, I'm open to the reform discussion. I think that's a budget discussion that we should have in February. But I, I really like where we're at now in regards to where we're, we're staffing and retention. And we've asked a lot of people for a lot of years to do mandatory overtime, um, where they didn't get a whole lot of choice, but they showed up every single time we asked them to do it. So, um, I think this is a really nice baseline where we're at now and I want to continue the momentum and the progress. So with that being said, I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
So just want to be clear, so this is a simple majority requirement for this vote, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I, I don't know where the commissioners are yet. I may go ahead and pass on this, but let me just say, I don't know that I want to follow necessarily Wichita's lead on this. I think that, uh, they have financial challenges and they are, they are, they have, actually provide more than we do currently. Um, so I don't know that that necessarily is a compelling argument for me personally. I would like to know for sure that we're going to have, uh, future discussions and with that, um, I may, I may support this, but I want to see, uh, whether there's three others that support it. Again, for purposes of my pain medication, I'm going to pass my first time around, so I'm a, uh, when you call the vote, I'm going to pass the first time. Thank you.
Understood. And I'm happy again in February at the budget retreat and I'm happy to have that conversation again. I think it's an appropriate time to do it, but we just went through a Q3 financial report and I would not compare Sedgwick County's financials to the city of Wichita's financials. I think we're doing a pretty good job. Madam Clerk, you have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty, Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Sheena, thanks for the detail. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, a resolution ensuring quality of life spending by Sedgwick County Government does not exceed sales tax dollars apportioned to Advilorium tax relief.
Okay, commissioners, before we even get starting on this line item here, we are going to defer this until Commissioner Howell is back in chambers to engage the discussion. So I'm going to move to defer item I to the December 4th meeting.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item J, selection of voting delegate and alternate, alternates for the Kansas Association of Counties 49th Annual Conference and Exhibition.
Okay, 49th Annual Conference is here in Wichita. Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Uh, this particular item, uh, the Kansas Association of Counties, which Sedgwick County is a member of that, uh, the bylaws for the Kansas Association of Counties provides that each county is supposed to select a delegate and a first and second alternate for, uh, voting on the KAC legislative platform, uh, that's proposed. And just for your information, the, the meeting when that will be discussed is the KAC Annual Meeting, December 4th, which is here in Wichita at 7:30 in the morning, uh, over at the Hyatt is where the meeting will be taking place. Um, and so at this point, what I would suggest, Chairman, I think what we've done in the past is traditionally you've opened nominations for the delegate. It would have to be either, either an elected or appointed official, it doesn't have to be a commissioner, I think it always has been in prior years. Um, vote for the delegate or close the nominations, then vote for who the, the delegate would be, go through the same process for the first and second delegates, then ultimately at the end, uh, have a motion that it would authorize the county clerk's office to submit those, that information to, uh, the KAC. Happy to stand for any questions if you have them.
Very good. Okay, Justin, thank you. Um, I think this is something that we've done in the past. I think everybody's relatively familiar with the process. Um, I would, uh, I would make a nomination for Commissioner Jim Howell, um, to be our delegate. Uh, Commissioner Howell, obviously with state experience, he's very familiar with KAC and has ongoing relationships there. So I would open, uh, I would make that nomination and open, uh, for the vote. We don't need to do a motion in a second on that, correct?
You, you wouldn't need to. I think you just open nominations, once, uh, you're done with that, you call, close nominations and then vote, uh, and then do a vote for each one of the three positions.
So we have a nomination for Commissioner Howell. Madam Clerk, go ahead and call the vote.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. So Commissioner Howell will be our, uh, delegate representing us at KAC. Um, and now we do a first alternate, is that correct? Um, I would make, uh, a nomination for Commissioner Pete Meitzner to be our first alternate. And I'm happy to close that nomination. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Uh, and now we need a second alternate, is that correct? This is just in case the train stopped us all and we're not able to, uh...
That's correct.
I've made two nominations. I'm open to allowing someone else to make a nomination on the second alternate if you'd like.
I nominate, uh, our chairman, Ryan Beatty.
There is a nomination for the second alternate. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Um, that is done. We've selected...
And Chairman, I, I, sorry to interrupt. I was just going to suggest to make a, uh, motion to authorize the county clerk's office to submit those to the KAC.
Very good. Yep, that was the next question. Okay, so I will make a motion to authorize the county clerk's office to authorize and submit the Sedgwick County's delegates and alternates to the Kansas Association of Counties.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, reported the bids and contracts, regular meeting on November 7th, 2024.
Hello, hello, welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Lee Barrier, Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts of November 7th, 2024 resulted in one item for which we are seeking your approval. That item is a full-spectrum imaging system for the sheriff's office in the amount of And I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have and recommend approval of this item.
Okay. Thank you, Lee. We appreciate that. Appreciate all the, uh, work of the bid board and all the meeting minutes so we can really follow along with what's happening there. Uh, commissioners, any questions on this one item? Seeing none, I will move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Lee, thank you. You're welcome to come here and pinch hit for Joe anytime you'd like.
Second straight.
Okay, commissioners, I'm going to hit pause on the Board of County Commission meeting and I'm going to convene the governing body of Fire District Number One. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
I'm present. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Uh, no one had signed up for public agenda for the Fire District. We'll move along. Next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of October 23rd, 2024.
Okay, commissioners, um, it looks like all commissioners were present with the exception of Commissioner Meitzner. Do we have any questions or comments on the meeting minutes for October 23rd? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of October 23rd, 2024.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item B, a resolution establishing holidays to be observed by Sedgwick County, Fire District Number One in 2025.
And welcome back to the podium, Sheena.
Glad to be back. So this is the same item we just discussed of, um, requesting, uh, the 11 paid holidays for the 2025 calendar for the Fire District.
Okay. I'd assume that the comments that were just made in the, on the BOCC side would probably, uh, stand for what we're doing in Fire. And I also would say that this is a conversation that we can have in February at the budget retreat on the possibility with HR. So, um, unless there's other comments, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, uh, to there's other comments, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
No.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Tom Stoltz.
Chairman of Commission, Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend, recommend approval of consent items C and D on the fire agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda for the Fire District? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Commissioners, anything under other?
I mean...
Commissioner Meitzner.
Yeah, just a note to my fellow Commissioners and the public, I will be traveling to the eleven-state MIPRC meeting, which is Midwest Inner City Passenger Rail Conference. There's eleven states that have a compact that's very powerful in the passenger rail world, and the state of Kansas does belong to that compact, and I will be joining a couple of state representatives and a KDOT representative, and I'm, I've been appointed as, as a delegate for that for a number of years now, and the cost is a part, part of the state's membership pays for the cost of this, of attending this conference, including the travel, so, but I'll, that'll be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but Wednesday morning I will be available by Zoom as we, as we get close to the agenda, so I can, I can Zoom in Wednesday morning for, for, for the meeting.
Very good.
Okay, we just wanted to let everyone know, so thank you.
Yeah, wonderful. Commissioner Meitzner, best of luck with that. Anything else under other? Okay. Seeing none, next item, please.
Executive session.
We do not have an executive session for the Fire District, so I'll officially adjourn the meeting of Fire District Number One, and reconvene the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Tom Stoltz. I'm gonna, Commissioner Tom... For reference, could I just say, this is related to the general meeting, not, it's not Fire District-centric, sorry about that.
That's okay, it still applies. Go ahead, Tom.
Chairman of Commission, Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommendable, recommend approval of consent items L through double-letter AK on consent agenda, a regular business.
Commissioners, any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, items L, all the way through items AK.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have anything under committee reports we'd like to share? Seeing none, next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have several things. First of all, we hold a household hazardous waste collection in my district here since our last meeting. We got over thirty, thirty thousand pounds of hazardous waste with three hundred and seventy-eight vehicles. It was a huge collection, so I want to thank all of our staff and everyone that was involved in that, because they, they worked hard, they actually opened up early because the line was already there. We were normally gonna shut down at one o'clock, but the line was still there. Finally, they stopped the vehicles at about 1:15 and said, we're not gonna take anymore, but they processed all the ones that were in mine at that point in time, so it was a big success. So, again, thanks to all of our staff for that. My Citizens Advisory Board toured the ADF, and that was kind of an eye-opener to a lot of people if you've never toured the adult detention facility, why, they do give tours occasionally to high school students and so forth, but I appreciate the sheriff, actually the chiefs were playing that night, and the sheriff stayed there to give my Citizens Advisory Board a tour of the facility, so I want to thank him for that. Couple other things real quickly, I want to remind everyone that the Veterans Coming Home salute is on the 19th, it's at Dock Hanger, so they are recognizing five individuals that night, I happen to be one of them, which kind of surprised me, but I want to thank them for that. So, I want to make sure that everyone's invited to Veterans Coming Home ceremony put on by PBS at Dock's Hanger. And the final thing I want to talk about briefly, and I just want to let you know what I've done, not that there's gonna be any impact to Sedgwick County, but there is an impact, okay? I was invited to a meeting yesterday morning out at Cheating Lake at the marina, and I was invited by Representative Joe Seaworth, he's my representative, and in attendance at that meeting was Joe Seaworth, Representative, Senator Chase Blasi was there, we had representatives from Marshals, Marans, and Estes Office there, we had the Secretary of the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks was in attendance, and about four members of his staff. And I, I let them know at the end, really, it should, we should have had someone from the, from the city there, because really, everything impacts the city a lot more than it impacts us. But if Cheating Lake dries up eventually, yeah, that will impact the rest of Sedgwick County and a lot of the cities outside of Wichita. But a lot of the discussion centered around, centered around the marina, and I did tour everything with that marina and went down to the boat docks and so forth. Anyone that has a boat in the boat docks right now, they're permanent fixtures, because they can't get out. It's, it's that low. In addition, it was concerned about who is in charge out there? Is it Department of Wildlife and Parks from the state? Are there environmental folks at the federal level? Who all makes decisions? And it turns out there are five or six different agencies, both at the federal level and the state level, that make decisions. Things like evergreens are growing up, where that there should be water, and those can kind of, as a water comes in, they can, can pollute the water in the future. So, there's a lot of decisions need to be made at the state level and the federal level. I would imagine if they talked with the city of Wichita, they probably need something on their legislative agenda. I don't know if, when they, we put together our joint legislative agenda, if it should be there or not, but I took a few pictures out there, and it is dry. Even if you could get your boat out, you can't even get it over to fill it up with fuel, because that's all completely, a long way away from any water. So there's, there's some serious concerns out, not only with the water, but also the gentleman that operates the marina there really has no income right now on the facility. He wants to sell the marina portion of it to the, to the state. Again, that's not a Sedgwick County issue, that's between all of the legislators who were there, Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks and so forth, but it was a long meeting, it went from ten o'clock to about two o'clock yesterday with the tour and everything. There's a lot of issues, but again, I don't believe that they're Sedgwick County issues, but it is a concern to Sedgwick County residents on the condition of that lake, so I just wanted to bring it up, that there's a lot of discussion gonna be going on at the state level, I hope, and at the federal level. I think we, we can sit back and watch it, if there's something we need to weigh in on, I think the city of Wichita, it was a bad time for the meeting, because it was Tuesday morning, and they have a city council meeting, so they, they couldn't, weren't in attendance, so they didn't hear any of this discussion or get a chance to tour, but in the future, as good partners, we may need to partner a little bit with the city of Wichita to figure out what we can do at the legislative level, both at the state and the federal level, to, even if it's writing letters endorsing what they need, we may need to do something, so I wanted to bring that up, and the only reason I, and actually, Stephanie Wise also attended the meeting, I invited her out there, because she's gonna take over, and I wanted to make sure that she knew what was going on, too, so in the future, you all may have something that, you're gonna have requests from other agencies. Thank you, that's all I have.
Appreciate that update. I would just say, under other, we just conducted an election last week, and we had over nine hundred, I think the total was nine hundred and fifty election workers that were staffing over a hundred and, over, I think a hundred and seven total poll sites. Obviously, that was on Election Day, they had the early voting sites, and then the three, early, early voting sites, including the, the old historic courthouse, and I just want to publicly say thank you to our election staff, Commissioner Laura Rainwater, her team did a fantastic job. Once again, Sedgwick County performed a safe and effective and efficient election, and it's because of those that sign up to do it, that sign up and work those long days to conduct the election, so Laura's team did a great job, and I think publicly that we should make sure that we know, that they know that we appreciate all the work that they did, that over nine hundred people that signed up to do this, it's a big deal, it's a very big deal, so we appreciate Laura, we appreciate the work of our election staff, so. Commissioners, anything else under other? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we do have an executive session today, correct? There it is.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for twenty minutes until 12:30, for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room for an executive session at 12:30.
Very good. Okay, I'll second that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Commissioners, we'll move to the sixth floor, and we will return at 12:30. Thank you.